It is 5:30 PM on April 18th and I'd like to call this work session to order. The first on our agenda is city updates, so Ms. Solano, please take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair and City Council. The first item is the mayor sends his regrets for not being able to attend this evening. He is with Senator Bennett and they are hosting stakeholders throughout the farm country with respecting about a farm bill that Senator Bennett is working on. So he's there, Milburger's is hosting and he's out in the county. Second update that I have is with respect to COVID and I just wanted to share the one week cumulative positivity count was 25.5, a bit up from last week, but not significantly. And the one week positivity rate is holding at 1.1%, so still the same as last week. And we have now 13 days of stable hospitalization COVID patients. So all of that is good news. And the third update to share, and I wanted to make sure that you got it, and please send me any questions. That was, I sent it out Friday afternoon and it was an update on the ARPA running balance and added it back in from January 1st total coming into 2022, the East Side Grocery cancellation of their ARPA subrecipient agreement, leaving the new balance of the 2.2 million and then the running total of all of the remaining first tranche of funds than that the submitters have presented to all of you in a work session. And that does leave the balance, if you approve all of them, it's not that, it's not finished, they're not, they all not have been presented to you for formal approval, but they have been presented to the task force and to the mayor, and these are his recommendations. That leaves a balance of tranche one of $39,016, but that was the confirmation of the the adjustment for the East Side Grocery and then the running total. And that does conclude city updates. Do you have any questions or any other information you'd like for me to bring next week?
Counselor Flores.
I, our last conversation, I was interested in potentially getting a couple of city council people and maybe somebody. I was thinking about Karen Wilson and taking a little trip down by the river by Fountain and potentially looking at that area that's becoming really, I mean, there's so much trash back there, but there's people actually living back there. And there's a road, a pathway where you actually have campers and cars and everything else. And I just wanted to go over there to maybe get some ideas on how we can close that road off potentially and, or do something because it's very unsightly. I've had several complaints again from the businesses along Interstate 25. And I just think that we need to go to maybe Plan B here because Plan A is working. And if you could kind of arrange that.
Are there other counselors that would like to join?
I was hoping Regina would volunteer because we've talked about that.
I've already been there.
Would you be willing to go down there with me?
Yes.
Okay.
But you've already been there too.
Well, I've been there. I've been down to the, to actually within the bottoms there, just most recently.
But maybe we could get some solutions to the issue.
Do we have a Plan A?
Yes, it's not working.
No, I wonder what the plan was.
It's, it's a plan, it's not working.
Ms. Solano, I'd like to be included as well if, if it works out.
When did you want to go, Dennis?
Yeah, one of the problems that if we, if there's more than two of us, we'll have to call a meeting, I guess, down there and I want to avoid that. I don't mind deferring either, if you really want, okay.
Well, I will tell you that I've already been down there, so I have really good knowledge. I've gone all the way to the river's edge. I've gone along that whole thing, so I have a lot of knowledge as to what's going on down there.
So.
So if you want him to see it.
Well, anybody can go down, any of you, all of you can go down and take a look at it.
Maybe since Heather and I have also been going on a number of tours together, or President Graham, excuse me, then maybe we could, we could set something up separate or maybe multiple tours.
Here's another idea. It's, it's, we know there's an issue there. What I want to do is start looking for some solutions within putting our heads together with, you know, our directors as to what we can do with that roadway. I don't even know whether the city owns, maybe there's property there that we don't even own. So we need to do a lot of research before we try to come up with some solution, but at least we will begin the process. Because I think one of them is closing that road, number one, and maybe we can't do it, but at least start asking those questions because it's really unsightly down there. And I think there's issues with health issues down there because people are actually living there.
Yeah, the public safety.
And the fires, the potential for fire, especially along that area. It's happening in Colorado Springs. They've had two fires now on the Fountain in Colorado Springs.
As well as the emergency responders responding to those fires, walking through some of that trash that's been left by folks living there. I know that's happened here for our Pueblo Fire Department as well.
Also, the health concerns, they're, you know, they don't have any running water, they don't have sewer down there. So obviously they're doing something that's unhealthy.
To confirm.
They're using the creek to relieve themselves. The Fountain Creek District did a study, all the homeless camps up and down the creek. Downstream of the camp, the E. coli levels are really high. So every place there's a camp, people are relieving themselves in the creek and.
Can we utilize the drones? At the police department and actually film it all the way down from American Furniture down to the mill and see how many we're actually looking at, because it's not just that area.
It's all the way down to the confluence. One of the other things that I, that's obvious to me is that there's so much shrubbery and stuff where they're kind of, that's where they're hiding. And it just seems to me that, you know, we should consider, you know, clearing that out too. And even, even maybe trimming the trees because that's where they're congregating and they're building actual little buildings and, you know.
May I confirm the staff? You'd like both chiefs, someone from code enforcement, which is likely Karen. And then I'd like to go with you and two council members and we might make multiple tours.
That'd be fine.
The direction, okay.
I think you need to talk to Parks. They're usually the ones that give a 48-hour notice for them to clear. So I think that's your number one department there.
And I think too, if we can get the drone to go through and actually get a real picture of it.
I remember when we authorized those two drones and I had suggested they be used to look at our roadways and stuff, and there's something in our policies that may not allow that. It was strictly, those two drones were strictly done or available to the fire department in the event of a fire or to the police department. And maybe we can utilize that, but, you know, just make sure that it's legal to our legal department.
I think that's because it was housing and businesses where there's not going to be anything down there but natural wildlife and refuge. So it's possible.
So I think we have a plan. Thank you, Ms. Solano, for coordinating, coordinating all of the tours as well as upcoming work session. Counselor Grant.
Ms. Solano, I just had a question on the ARPA balance that you had sent with the remaining balance from January 2nd of 1.5 million. In our retreat that was presented later on around the end of February, the remaining balance was 1.673. So we seem to have $130,000 difference there, so I was wondering.
Thank you, Counselor. I will go and look at the timing difference if there was one that was approved between January 2nd or, or, or until the retreat date. I think was that March the something or other? I'll go see what the discrepancy is, the difference between those two dates.
I was trying to account for, you know, it seems that we were short about $497,000 and then I saw the Pueblo reading, reading pays, and that's the only one that we haven't went over correct out of the, the list of the ARPA.
We have not been over the Pueblo reading pays at 328,500, and that's the mayor's recommendation to city council. And, and I think that our city attorney is working on a, a subrecipient agreement to present to all of you for year two. Oh, also waiting on the county's confirmation of their support back of the 500,000. And lastly is on the very bottom, it's the rescue mission of a 100,000 request for their Hope Project Trash Cleanup. It is nowhere in here at all. We are working with them on modifying their budget. It didn't just jive in what they had presented.
Thank you.
At that point, Ms. Solano, are we sustaining programs because they were paid and they've already been covered? And what, what we're doing at this point is sustaining programs. Because I thought we were giving one time amounts of money to a certain program.
Yeah, last year it was a half a million dollars contribution for, from the ARPA funds for the summer reading program from the county and the city. And we didn't quite spend it all. There's 177,000 left. That is why this request is at 328.5 for year two. Due to the impact of the data, the mayor's recommending this to city council again for this year. And then the library district I know is working on how, how and how much they can sustain this program without ARPA funds past 2022 summer.
So they'll have total of a million out of the ARPA funds for library.
They will have, if council approves this. This is the request.
I mean, what was to be expected if the grocery had gone through at 750,000? You know, that was, so we're just adding now, we're, because we have a balance, we're adding other programs?
The request for this program, I think, came about from the executive director of the library in January, when he presented to council on the success of last year's program and indicated at that time he would be speaking with both county commissioner, city council, and the mayor in hopes of asking for resources for this summer as well.
Did the county approve anything?
I am waiting to hear before city council is presented with this, if the county has approved the restoring of their half 500,000 from their ARPA funds. And I have not heard that yet. We do know they have 177,000 of unspent from last year's resources, so the library is prepared. If this 328.5 is not approved at both the county and the city to operate a modified summer reading challenge with 177,000 that you already approved from last year that was not spent and dedicated those funds to the grade levels that the reading or loss of reading impact is most significant for. And I believe it to be second, third, fourth grade, but they are waiting to hear first the mayor as well, whether the county has the ARPA resources to match the cities here for this summer. The library district was, was hoping that the county would have a fast reply somewhere now in the last two weeks of April in that by the time they register kids and they market it for the summer, they only have about five weeks left before the, the end of the school year. And they wanted to register as many students as was possible before the school year expired.
I'm gonna throw it to Counselor Flores.
This program was never meant to be sustainable. This program was really designed to help our kids kind of overcome all of those, that first year where they were home and they were, they had the long distance learning and also to motivate them to maybe catch up on their reading, et cetera. And basically, I think we all anticipated that after that money ran out, that this program could not be sustained to the future. I don't, I don't think we would have the funds to be able to do that. The other thing is that the, the library may have some other, I'm not speaking for the library, but maybe they have some way to sustain the program, but this was meant as a very short term, maybe one or two year period to help our kids maybe catch up for all the lost time they weren't able to go into the classroom. As I recollect the way it was presented.
Are there any other questions or comments from council? Keep in mind that we'll be talking more about the COVID monies and the loans later on during the agenda. Number four.
The ARPA funds are not on number four's agenda, but the COVID emergency loans are.
Okay, moving on then. Our second presentation is caramel, depends on how you say it, caramel, caramel. Colorado's innovative childcare solution. So can I please call Ms. Shehorn and Ms. Holtz to the podium, please? And whenever you're ready.
Hello, nice to be here. Thank you so much for having us. My name is Joan Holtz and I am the Director of Family Support for Illuminate Colorado. And we are the ones who are coming up with this innovative childcare solution. So we had in probably October of 2017 through April of 2018, a group of stakeholders came together and the purpose of their, their work was to really understand and create a research-based viable multidisciplinary strategy for substantial and actionable change to prevent child maltreatment and improve outcomes for children in Colorado. What they really were seeking to understand is what is happening with women who are in treatment and their children? How involved is child welfare? We know in many instances, child welfare is definitely involved in these circumstances when substitute disorders are happening. And so we really wanted to understand what if are those barriers and how do we help support families and mothers to improve outcomes for children in Colorado? So as you can see, our partners were professionals from early childhood, child welfare, public health, behavioral health, law enforcement, judicial education, and family support. From that, they created a report and that was a 14 different recommendations. And they created another work group, sorry, I went too fast. They created another work group, which is called the Childcare and Substitute Disorder Treatment Work Group. And that group started in July of 2018 and actually still continues to this day. And what this group is charged with doing is taking those 14 recommendations and they really floated to the top. Some things were really actionable and things could happen much more quickly and things that would make more of an impact, an immediate impact. So one of the things that they actually did was they came up with House Bill 20191193, which really is looking at how do we help these families in treatment? And so they established a childcare and substitute disorder treatment pilot project as a two-generation initiative. And what we're doing is really looking at how are we enhancing childcare resource referrals? So if you're in treatment, how do you find out about where your options are for childcare? So that was one component of it. We wanted to enhance the capacity of existing childcare resource referral programs through the centralized call system, which is the 911 system. And then pilot a regional mobile childcare unit, and that's actually what we have outside. So it's really a, was a three-pronged approach to really helping families with children who are experiencing substitute disorders. So here's, we were able, we, the, the bill was signed. And from that, Illuminate Colorado did an RFP and we received the funds to create the childcare pilot. And so we have a mobile childcare classroom that's providing services in the Denver metro area, in the San Luis Valley region, and now coming to Pueblo and Canyon City. In Denver, we also have a different approach, a little bit more. We do navigation for childcare and we really are taking someone who's trained, goes into other treatment centers and talks to parents and actually sits down with them and comes up with a plan to get long-term ongoing childcare for them. And then the last bucket is Color Shines Childcare Resource and Referral. We really worked closely with 911 childcare navigators, not 911, the 211, Colorado Shines navigators and really helped them to understand how can you talk to families, what is stigma, how do you work through that stigma process? And then really talking to families and getting them set up for, for long-term childcare. What we found is that childcare is a huge barrier in and of itself for anyone. But for parents and especially moms with young children who are in treatment, if they don't have a place where they can bring their child, sometimes they're having to make decisions. Do I stay here with my child today? Because maybe I don't trust the caregivers that are around me or I don't have any caregivers. Or do I bring my child with me to my treatment? And having your child in treatment, an infant, you know, if they're sleeping, that's one thing. But if you have a toddler and that toddler is running around and you're trying to talk about some of the things that are happening in your life and the trauma that's occurred in your life, it's not the best place to have that child. So that's really what we are trying to do. We come in, we bring in well-qualified teachers. We train our teachers and work with our teachers on stigma and how do you work with people in, in substance use disorder treatments or recovery or behavioral health. We really work with our teachers to understand that and we get them trained so that they're ready to go. We are also considered drop-in. Drop-in is defined by the state of Colorado as providing services for three hours or less in a 24-hour period, which at that point means we are exempt from childcare licensing. By that, we follow childcare rules and regulations to the best of our ability. We really want to do that. But because we're dropping, we may not see a kiddo. We may see a kiddo for one time on a Monday. If we go to treatment center A on Monday morning and then go to treatment center B Monday afternoon, we may not see that kiddo again. We may only see him once, or maybe we'll see him the following Monday or maybe a Monday or two later. It's not the same as regular childcare, which runs, you know, typically six to six and kids are there for an extended period of time. We really are there to give parents the opportunity to get that treatment and get the support that they need at that moment. So why do we do this? I think I touched on it a little bit. The difficulty of finding childcare is a stronger predictor of maternal neglect than almost any other factor, including mental health, severity of drug use, history, abuse as a child, and use of public assistance. In 2018, there are only 3.3% of outpatient substance use disorder treatment facilities in Colorado that provided childcare. So we really found that this was a barrier that we really wanted to, to address. So you can see this is our first unit. I'm happy to say we actually have a fleet. I think you'd call three a fleet. This is our first unit. This one launched in Denver in 2020, so right in, literally in September of 2020. As we were in the middle of the pandemic, our numbers have been low. People have gone to telehealth, so we're really trying to build that back up and bring kids back to, and bring moms back into, to treatment programs. So we affectionately call this one Honey. There is bears on this one. There's a, an adult bear and five baby bears with honey on it. So again, honey is on there. We have one called Acorn, which is, this one is in the valley. You can see that what we've done with each of our units is we really tried to take a look at the area that we're in and have the wrap match that. You can see the great sand dunes are in here. You see that there's more hills and more representative of the San Luis Valley. So we received funding last summer from Office of Behavioral Health through the Colorado Department of Human Services. And that funding said we could go and look for a third region to see if we can really launch that third unit. It was a quick timeline, so we looked at three different areas across the state. And I sent out emails to a lot of early childhood councils in those different areas, reached out to some treatment centers, reached out to other partners and reached out to Angela. Angela had an immediate response within 24 hours. She says, yes, come talk to me, please come talk to me. So we didn't understand, you know, we wanted to understand more about, you know, what is readiness being? Those are those community connections. Can you pull people together, the community leadership, high level of readiness? And that happened to be Angela with her leadership here in the community. In November, we started meeting and we pulled together a group from treatment centers, from other early childhood councils in, in Fremont County and in, in Riffano as well. And really started looking at how can we, how can we utilize this unit within this, within this community? And so here comes the fun part. So how do you turn an RV into an infant and toddler classrooms? So our unit in Denver is really more specifically set for infants and toddlers. That's the way we've defined it for the metro area. But we've defined it differently, both in the San Luis Valley and here in Pueblo, because we really wanted to be able to serve as many people as we could. So we've really looked at the ages of being zero to five. So we know that if we have one or two infants, we actually have a door in the middle and you'll see that where we close off the area and then we can keep infants on one side and we can have toddlers on the other side, or we can even do preschoolers. We want to have the flexibility so that we know one day we're all going to have, you know, five preschoolers, three to five. We can open up the whole unit, have buckets underneath and have preschool materials and they can provide services for those children at that, at that time. It's taken us a while to locate the units. We really had to figure out how do you get two doors in a unit, there are very, very few units and actually have two doors. We wanted to have two emergency doors on each side for our classrooms. And so the other part to this is as with licensing, there's certain standards that we have to follow. And so we will get a fire inspection here in Pueblo and we will get it signed off. That's a requirement for Pueblo. In some of our counties, it's not Canyon City. It's, they just want to see the unit. They'll sign it off and say, yes, we're done. But it's not even going to be a formal inspection. They just want to see what we're doing within their area. San Luis Valley doesn't really, they're not doing a fire inspection because we're considered exempt from childcare. So it's very, very different by location. We have worked with CDPE and we have worked with each of the public health departments and then each of the communities that we've gone into. And because we're considered exempt and we are not serving, or we're, we're serving prepackaged food. We are not preparing food on these units. The children are there for three hours or less. We do not need to get a public health inspection. So from there, they come from different areas of the, of the US is where they come from. We pull all the delivery together. We do the approve the layout design and then we rebuild. We literally pull out everything that makes it a luxury RV. Everything gets pulled out except the microwave. We pull out the showers, we leave everything and everything else comes out so we can, we can renovate it. And the kitchen sink, that's the only other thing we left. And here's Caramel. This is in our community here. We, again, you'll see the wrap. We'll talk a little bit more about the wrap outside. There's some things we really like to, to show you how it represents the community here. Floor plan, you have that in your PowerPoint. Here are classrooms. You can see from front to back how we set that up and you'll see more as we are going along. Here's our schedule. We are in Pueblo on Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays and part day on Thursday and in Canyon City on Tuesday and half day on Thursday. So local implementation cost, costs about $130,000 for two teachers. We do hire two teachers that meet childcare licensing standards in our ACT qualified, which is early childcare teacher qualified. It's a $50,000 just for classroom materials, operations, supplies, consumables, gas, maintenance, storage, and that storage of the actual RV itself, the professional development, and then $20,000 per year for administrative costs. So it's about $20,000 to run, 20,000, $200,000 to run a unit for, per year. And our current funding, as it sits right now, we have $380,000 that was awarded to Illuminate from Colorado Department of Human Services Office of Behavioral Health for that third unit, which I talked about earlier. $500,000 per year is allocated to, from the Colorado Department of Human Services Office of Early Childhood. And this is that House Bill 191193 for all three classrooms, so that funding will support all three classrooms. It's set to expire in 23, June of 2023, but we're requesting, we have put in a request to, to extend it to June 30th of 2028. And then we have put in an application with Packard for over two years, a request, 75,000 for each year. And that's to help cover the cost of a teacher. And so I'm going to turn it over to Angie.
Good evening. I'm Angie Shehorn, Director of Children First at Public Community College. And one thing I did want to add to the license exemption piece, parents must be on the premises at all times. Those children are in our care. They're, when they drop off their child or check in their child at the childcare facility, they're given a restaurant buzzer to take with them. So in the event that we need to get a hold of the parent, we simply activate that buzzer and that parent knows that they need to come back out to the RV to, to take care of whatever the issue is with their child. So I did want to make sure that you understood, they cannot leave the premises while their children are in our care.
What I didn't mention also was that these units are onsite. They are at each location. So we literally take this, drive it to a treatment center, park it on the parking lot, and then we set it all up and the parents come. So then we hand them the restaurant buzzer. So we are onsite. That is the other piece for that exemption.
So some of the things that we are having a little bit of a challenge working on logistically is someplace to park the RV when it's not being used. It needs to be heated or at least temperature controlled to some degree because we have water in the pipes at all times, except for on the weekend. So we need to be able to find a place that we can store it. And we do have money in the budget to pay for that monthly fee for storage. So any of you that has an idea, please reach out to me because that's proven to be the biggest challenge. Our second big challenge is getting people to work on the RV. It's a challenge for everyone to find qualified staff, but we need to find qualified staff. And we actually had a discussion today that maybe we separate it, hire a driver and two staff, because that seems to be the biggest barrier for people who are interested in working on the RV is they're a little bit intimidated on driving it. We were trained to drive it. I understand their intimidation. And then. And then classroom supplies. So we have a baby shower going on, a registry on Lake Shore. For people who want to participate in that, they can simply purchase items from Lake Shore to be able to outfit the RV with educational materials. And then ongoing local implementation funding, as she said, $200,000 a year to be able to keep this resource going. So any ideas you have about innovative ways for us to address this funding piece of it? I'm happy to hear any ideas that you possibly have. Of course, we understand there'll be maybe multiple grants need to be written to be able to come up with that amount. But any ideas you have, I'm open to hearing.
Well, thank you, Ms. Sheehorn and Ms. Holtz. What questions are there from council? Councilor Maestries hot on the button today.
Oh, I just wanted to know how many children can it service? What's the occupancy?
We're looking at four and four, so eight.
Eight. And how many days a year? Is it Monday through Friday?
Yeah, Monday through Friday. Again, we have the schedule set for here. Pueblo on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Friday, and Canyon City on Tuesday, part day Thursday, and part day Thursday too for Pueblo.
Thank you.
Counselor Martinez Ortega.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank you both and your whole team for putting this together. As we know, childcare is sometimes a barrier for access to care. And I just want to say thank you for putting something like this together and working within the parameters to figure out the solutions within those without having to go through all the extra work. So thank you.
I did want to mention also that our current funding is somewhat restrictive. It has to be addiction supports or behavioral health supports. But we're getting one more request to expand the services to be able to have it at the Judicial Center for when parents are going to see their probation officer, going to court, to have supervised visitation on their parenting classes. So as we are able to expand those, expand the funding, then we're hopeful that we can expand those offerings as well.
That's great, because sometimes folks need a whole day of running around to get a lot of these different little loose ends tied up for the month or whatever they have to do for their whatever.
Counselor Maestri.
I didn't.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I didn't take it.
Counselor Warner.
Thanks for that presentation. So this this rehab, is it maintenance rehab that these parents are going to? I mean, are they sober and this is maintenance or?
It's any of the, any of those supports. They can go to see a counselor. It's not in the treatment facility. So they're not going to seek treatment. I guess the short answer is yes, maintenance, and then also behavioral health supports.
Okay, cool. And, you know, Colorado receives a lot of money from the federal government for heroin, issues with heroin. So you might be able to tap into that.
Great idea. We'll look into that.
Any other questions before we actually go down and tour the mobile childcare unit classroom? Miss Solano.
I have one suggestion. Thank you, Ms. Madam Chair. St. Mirren Corwin Hospital was willing to offer space behind their facility with respect to some storage for the Public Food Project to store freezer stuff. Perhaps they may have space for storage.
Okay, shall we follow you out to then go see it? Okay, we're back from touring the mobile childcare unit. Sheriff. Yeah, so our next agenda item is the Chemical Stockpile Emergency Preparedness Program or CSEP. So do we have Sheriff and then Chief Noah to the podium, please? And Sheriff and Chief whenever you're ready.
Good evening. Thanks for having us here. I just start to, I'd just like to lead off with just a couple of comments. The, I think the original genesis behind asking us here was to get an idea budgetarily on what it would cost us when CSEP moves away. And in conversations that we've had with the Sheriff's Office and some different things that there were looking at with the radio system and some different possibilities, tonight, we are not going to be able to give you dollar amounts on what that would be. This is a lengthy process that the sheriff is going to take some time to explain. It's going to involve us inventorying what we have on hand, looking at, you know, costs to maintain and build a system if we decided to stay with our own versus maybe going with the state and doing some other things. So it may be a bit premature to to expect some budgetary stuff in this meeting. I think it's something that we will certainly be working for and working towards with Lori Pence in the future internally, because she oversees our radio system. But I just wanted to lead with that and just let you know kind of where we are. And I'll turn it over to Sheriff Taylor, who has a lot more of the particulars than I do.
Thank you, Chief. You're going to hear very little from me and a lot from my CSEP director, Lisa Shorter. So really what I want to do is give you a familiarity with the CSEP program. I know some of you that have been on council in the community for some time have a pretty good working knowledge of what CSEP does, the Chemical Stockpile Emergency Preparedness Program. The reason that I, and I've been kind of yelling it from the top of the mountain with everybody, every council, every commissioners that come in, it's like, this money is going away, and so you need to be prepared for that. Now, it's not just the city council, and it's not just the county commissioners. It's every single fire board within the county, Pueblo West Fire Board, Pueblo Rye, Colorado City, Buella, Rule. The letter that I gave you, you can read at your leisure. This is just broke down for the city. Just to give you a quick example, the Sheriff's Office through CSEP, we just bought the city's road and bridge department $720,000 worth of radios that we got for the, for your, what do you call it, road and bridge or?
Streets.
Streets, yeah. So we just, we just bought all the radios for them. Every single radio in this community, whether it be fire, whether it be EMS, whether it be police, was bought through CSEP over the past few years. Those are really big ticket items. This radio right here costs $2,500. Just kind of put it in context for you. And so CSEP has really been funding this entire first responding community for many, many years. And so just to kind of give you an overview that I'd like for Lisa Shorter, we had a quick 10-minute PowerPoint presentation. I won't kill you with death by PowerPoint, but it'll really kind of give you a working knowledge, and then we can answer some questions. The big money ticket item is the zone controller that we'll be talking more extensively in the future about with both the council and the chief and Lori Pence and the city. Our zone controller, which costs us about seven and a half million dollars, we don't owe anything on it, right? It's ours. And so that's where all the digital trunk radio systems route through. And just to maintain that one zone controller for us is right around $640,000 per year. So as CSEP gets ready to move out of our community, those price tags are going to be ours. And so we're now looking at a lot of different scenarios of what we can do to kind of mitigate that. Because I don't, I talked to the county commissioners, and I think you guys are probably the same. I don't think anybody wants a $640,000 bill for to. I don't think anybody wants a $640,000 bill for to continue to maintain our zone controller. So we're looking at a lot of different things to, to try to mitigate that. So I'd like to turn it over to Lisa Shorter so she can run through this PowerPoint presentation. You have it on your desks and the letter. I was asked for the specifics to the city, the fire department, as well as the police department. And what we have purchased for them through the CSEP program. This gives you a kind of a snapshot. It's not all inclusive. The, the gray one down on the first page that says hazmat truck, I just bought two hazmat trucks for Pueblo West Fire and for Rule Fire. To the tune of about 289,000 apiece. The ones that they had were only three years old. I'm going to give one of them from Pueblo West to the city fire. And so that's the cost of that 214,000. So that, that kind of give you an idea of what we're, what we've been able to provide for the, for the area law enforcement and first responders. Lisa, Lisa Shorter is the chemical stockpile emergency preparedness program director. She's also head of my communication center for many, many years and she knows, has forgotten more about this than I know. So I'll just turn it over to her real quick.
I'm going to go pretty fast. She's got the slides. Okay. Oh, I've got them. A girl in control. All right. So there's a QR code here for you to take a look at. It's just the public law, the reason the whole program exists. So it, it's a congressional mandate and there's also a congressional mandate that it's gone by December of 2023. And they're on track. They're likely to meet that. On average, we do about five to seven million dollars annually. About $900,000 of that is our staff. There's just some of the things that CSEP has purchased over the years or implemented over the years. We've been around for 35 years. So what started in 89 with like $10,000 has really grown to a substantial budget and a lot of capabilities in our community. That are pretty well unmatched even in some of the bigger communities in the nation. Even just the networking, you know, the fact that chief Knoller and sheriff Taylor can get in a room and have a conversation. That kind of stuff doesn't happen in a lot of communities. Our public information officers all know each other. That's because of our risk communications network. That's unique to our community. That's all things that are beneficial, but not necessarily tangible. Now we've got to talk about sustaining, sustaining it all. So you've, everybody's talked a little bit about this, this product here. If you just take a look at things, then you can see the, the fourth item, the MSA millennium masks. They're $800 apiece. We've bought 210 of them for the city police department. They were $168,000 total. Historically, you know, over time, we've bought some different ones that weren't necessarily great. Or we've had to cycle in and out some products. So about, about just shy of a quarter of a million dollars. Equal to that mask is the voice emitter, $725 per unit. We've bought one for every mask. You don't have to have one for every mask. You don't have to have one at all. But what you have to consider, and this is where chief Knoller is talking about, these are all things that it's really hard to put a dollar amount on. Because he and the sheriff and the mayor and all of you have to help make those decisions. Because what the voice emitter does is it allows that officer to speak clearly through his radio. And to communicate to citizens who might approach him while he's working a traffic control point. Or she's working a traffic control point and has some injury or something like that they need to identify. So you can do that with everything on this list. And that's really kind of what we've been doing in our program with everything as well. The PPE, just shy of $900,000 over the course of it. That includes both of the, the mask and the emitter that I talked about, but also the filters and the batteries that we buy. And then we test our equipment and make sure that the officers, both law enforcement and fire. Can safely wear that equipment. So they are required to do annual fit testing and we check to make sure their mask works. We do that with, in conjunction with the health department and we do that every year. And that will be one of the things that you'll see go away with CSEP. The radios and consulates and the tower support, that's three and a half million dollars. That's what the sheriff was talking about. That's the radios. That's something that we're going to have to figure out a way to keep the capability high. Because our responders are expecting that level of communication when they go out in the street. You guys own three towers. You own Goat Hill, Jackson Hill and Walking Stick. The county owns two, Pueblo Chemical Depot and 12 Mile. And then Pueblo West has one as well. So we're talking about radio towers. These are easily a million dollars apiece. And they all have 12 channels on top of them. And because they all are simulcasting, then we don't have to worry anymore about an officer in a building that can't get a signal. We don't have to worry anymore about an officer that turns the corner. And so now that tower that he's connected to doesn't work. It would be, it would be a shame to go backward. The simulcast system requires the microwave. So that's one of the things that are in your packet that you're going to have to consider as well. And that's why it's listed here. The zone controller, we've got some tentative plans for, so I'll talk to you about that in just a second. Oh, look, I'm going to talk to you about it right now. The Department of Public Safety at the state is kind of where we expected that thing to land. But there are some conversations that we need to have before that happens. Subscriber fees are something that agencies are always worried about, right? So just like your cell phone, if you want to subscribe to that radio, then the state really could start charging a fee. Whether it's a per click fee or a per radio fee, that could be implemented without, you know, much notice at all. And then all of the sudden, all of our agencies, even though it was our zone controller and we gave it to them, could be subject to those fees. So that's one of the things we want to talk about. We want to see if we can keep some regional technical support and some monitoring here locally. And then of course, we've built a building around that zone controller and it would sure be nice if it stays there. That's a hardened area, 101 West 10th Street. If you guys haven't seen the emergency services center, you're welcome to come by. Our emergency operations center is in there. The sheriff's 911 center, the hardened network room for the zone controller and all of our other network equipment. And then we have another 4,500,000 that's not included in that because that's our equipment. This just kind of talks about all of that equipment and who uses it because it's not just us. That zone controller is throughout southeast Colorado. That's where all of the traffic goes. We did a sustainability report. We did one quite a while back and then we had it updated. FEMA had it updated and the cost of retaining this over 20 years, the system as it stands, $61 million. Because by that point, everything they're expecting will need to be replaced. The towers, the zone controller, the microwave, all of it. So I talked to you just real quick about how you are going to have to make some decisions. We're making them too. We're not making them just with equipment though. We're making them with inventory and with staff and with systems. And sustaining some of those things that I told you weren't so tangible. So a radio, okay, what is it? Well, what are we talking about? We're talking about all mobiles and portable radios. Well, what do they do? They provide public safety communication. Do we need that? Yeah, we need that. So now we need to talk about how to fund it. Sheriff said the APX for 100 or 4,000 models are $2,500 each. The APX 6,000 models are $3,500 each. That includes accessories, programming and installation and a warranty. So you're going to have to ask yourself some of those questions. If we do give the zone controller to the state, there's just some of those things there that we talked about that we would want to kind of keep in mind. But Zone 6 can't fail. It's the only non-private controller in the region. So if, even if we wanted to give it to them and they didn't want it, they would take it because it can't fail. Too many other agencies rely on it. In fact, they just recently put Teller County on our zone controller with very little notice to us. So I think that they're expecting to take it. And I think I've hit on this enough already, you know, equipment's equipment. But these relationships and these coordinated responses and things like that, the mutual aid agreement that the fire departments have. And just the, the coordination between the two PSAPs or public safety answering points, the 911 centers, they're fantastic. And all of that is a credit to the leadership over the past several years of your first response agencies and the counties. And so whatever happens to the equipment, they're still going to be working on keeping those mutual responses and those coordinated plans together. Because I'll tell you something, we came out of COVID, like no community came out of COVID. Because we have the JIC and we have the EOC and we have the coordination with the health department. And we had the city fire department just working, working in that vaccination clinic at all hours. And, and our boss, my boss is coordinating the vaccinations and it was pretty great. Just some things we've done in the past year and a half. And again, they're on track. This is June 23. So that was their deadline. So they could get some contractor incentives, I think. It'll probably slip a little bit. But what they're telling us now is to anticipate a November surety letter. And at that date, all of the preparedness spending that we do has to stop. So I just encourage you to think about how you want to handle that now because it's hit $100 million.
Just to grab the questions.
You can answer it. I'll leave that.
Let me, she is done. And let me just give you one more thought and then we'll take as many questions as you'd like. So currently we're at the point where we need to start thinking about what are we going to do with the zone controller? Because I've talked to the commissioners, they don't want to pay 640,000. There is a zone controller that you need to know about. Pike's Peak has a zone controller that is, that they charge for. So everybody that's on their zone controller, they charge. I was talking to the chief and I, I don't want to go out and charge Werfenau County $300 a radio. Because that's what it is. $300 per radio, per individual. And then we have to collect it to pay for our maintenance, just the maintenance on the zone controller. So there's a couple of things that are in our favor and I will be more than happy to share the sustainability report. I commissioned one sustainability report years ago and then a second edition just came out. And it really tells, it's, it's, it'd be hard for you to find just the cities in there, but you can do it. So I'd be glad to share that with you. It was done by Mission Critical. They'll tell you exactly how much money it's going to cost and I'm going to share that with the chief. And maybe we can try to vet and ferret some numbers out for you. But that's pretty much the presentation. It's a year away. I wanted to get this started early. Because we do have to make a decision. I have to make a decision on what's, what's best for the community to do with the zone controller. The other thing that's been holding me up currently is Office of Information Technology at the state. Is currently under the governor's office. It is being moved through legislation to be moved under the Department of Public Safety. So it will become a public safety entity, OIT, that, that portion of it, that controls the zone controllers. So that legislation is getting ready to be passed and signed by the governor. And so once that happens, that's when we'll really get into the negotiations. As to what we're going to do with it, what are we going to do with the towers? Is it going to include this, that or there's a lot of possibilities here? And we'll do that in conjunction with, with chief Knoller and the city and whoever you guys decide.
You know, one other thing I would like to add to is some of these numbers are not numbers that we're going to have to assume immediately in November. The portable radios that we have now won't need to be replaced November of, of 2023. There's a life cycle for those items and eventually they will need to be replaced. And that's where coming up with some of these budgetary numbers that I think you were initially asking for, Ms. Winters. It makes it a little bit difficult to do right now, but we are working on that. And hopefully here relatively soon, we'll be able to give you some of those numbers of where they hit the 2023 budget. Certainly. And then how that, how that looks as we expand out beyond that. And a lot of that depends on, do we pay for per radio? Do we end up in that situation where we've got, you know, 200 radios, we're paying $300 apiece for each radio? And that's probably, that's very low. It's probably almost triple that number of radios when you count fire and, and parks. And, and the other agents, the other departments in the city that use those radios. So I think there's a lot of things that we'll be able to flesh out a little bit better as the sheriff said, as we start having some of these conversations with the state. And seeing how that looks going forward.
Well, thank you sheriff and chief and Lisa for that information. This is definitely heavy counsel for us.
You know, the, the two key words here are chemical stockpile domain. Chemical stockpile was really the reason that we were able to, to get all of this. At, at the Pueblo Army Depot and, and the other one in Kentucky. So is the elimination or the funding going to dry up at the same time that the chemical destruction is completed? Or is there some other date out there?
The, it is six months, it's a six month close up. So when they destroy the last chemical munition, it is literally 180 days from then that our funding will be gone.
So my question has to do with, is it necessary to have the same kind of operation? That you had in place in the event of a catastrophe with the chemicals that were out there? Now that they're eliminated, I mean, is there some other model that, that could reduce the cost to keep this? In an area that makes more sense, eliminating, you know, all of those chemicals?
Well, I, you know, I think you need to keep, obviously the emergency operations center is not going anywhere.
Right.
That was leveraged by CSEP funding to the tune of about 25 million, not including the zone controller. There's still an emergency management need for our community. And so will it change missions? Absolutely. Will that affect costs? Probably. But will it totally eliminate it? I, I don't think so. A lot of the, I took over the CSEP program in 2009 by resolution, the commissioners. The old Department of Emergency Management, it was Stephen Douglas. Some of you guys remember Stephen Douglas. He was the director of emergency management. He retired. They didn't have a succession plan. So the commissioners asked the sheriff, hey, can you take this over? Sure. So as, as you probably would have too, because I got no funding for it. But anyway, I took it over. I absorbed it and built it better. And through the CSEP funding, we then turned our attention to funding first responders. Primarily fire and hazardous material, which are specific to the chemical destruction and, and what are the, what the community faces as far as a danger. And so I think we've done it. I've bought fire trucks for every agency to include the city that would, would respond on a, on a chemical fire. And so all those things are not going to go away. They still need a hazardous material truck. Maybe not for, for mustard agent anymore, but they're still going to need it in our community. We're still going to have the need for emergency management throughout the city and the county. And so I, I think that's about as close as I can get to answering the specifics of that question.
Sure. No, that was a good answer. Thank you. You know, I'd like to expound just a little bit. I think there's probably some things on this list that we wouldn't need to get chemical suits. We would still need gas masks for officers. We use CS gas in different environments when we have barricaded suspects, stuff like that. But the radio system is pretty much going to need to be the way it is. And that's the biggest, the biggest cost for us in the city. I don't know that that's the biggest expenditure out of all the CSEP funds that the sheriff has. But if we were to take it over, that would be the biggest, that would be the lion's share of the money.
Thank you.
Counselor Warner?
I'm really not going to thank you for that report. That was pretty depressing. But the, the 62 million over 20 years, what was, is that the radio maintenance? So you're looking at what, 3 million a year?
Radio maintenance and hardware replacement.
Right. That would be everything to repair the radio replacement. If you look at this life cycle, this paper here, it says life cycle, returning, recurring life cycle. Those are the life cycles of the equipment. And so in the context of what Lisa was saying on the 60 million, the life cycle of a tower is X. And during that 20 year period, we would have to replace that and it would cost Y.
Right. But that, that's like 3 million a year.
Right.
That's not too bad, really.
Okay.
And then what was the 640,000? What was that?
The 640,000 is just the maintenance of the zone controller.
Of the zone controller. Okay.
So that's what we pay. But, but currently and, and forever since we've gotten it, it's been paid through CSEP funding. So it doesn't come out of council funds, it doesn't come out of county funds, it comes out of CSEP funds. So I put in a budget, just like I do for my sheriff's office for CSEP every year. And that's part of the budget to maintain the zone controller and all the towers.
Okay. So the 3 million a year, are you looking at the, the city and the county to, to share that? Are you looking for a, a budget in the, in the city and the county to kind of split the difference there? Like one and a half million per year?
I'm really not looking for, for anything. I'm more just giving you the information. This is what we have to come up with. You're a funding body. The county's a funding body.
Right. So it'd be the city and the county that would eventually pick this up. That's what I'm saying. Right. So it'd be the city and the county that would eventually pick this up. That's what I'm saying.
Well, I mean, it could also be fire boards, it could be fire districts, it could be Pueblo West Metro, it could be a lot of different entities. It could be sustainability funding that comes from the state. Because the current emergency operations center in Pueblo is the backup emergency operations center for the state. One of the reasons I got it designated as such was in anticipation of the closeout of CSEP so that we could find sustainable funding to come to Pueblo. And so all those little things are going to be in play when we decide how we're going to fund this as a community.
Okay. So you think there's income somewhere?
Yeah, I think, well, I sit on the Justice, Justice Assistance Grant Board for years. And one of the things that all these agencies came to us with, with requests were money to buy radios. Well, Chief Knoller, Chief Davenport, we haven't had to buy radios. We haven't had to go to our funding body and say, hey, can you buy us forty radios? Because we're out. We haven't had to do that for years. So that's just a different mindset that this funding body, the county funding body. None of the fire departments have had to buy radios for years. They're going to have to start buying radios. So I actually don't think it's a nightmare. And I have been advocating this since I got this program in oh-nine to other councils and other commissioners. And, and CSEP is always going to be here. Well, I'm here to tell you, CSEP is going away. And so we, we, we need to get, we need to get busy on figuring out alternative funding. So JAG funding is available. There's a lot of different fundings across the state through grants that we haven't put in for, for years that we can now start putting in for. So it's really not that bad.
Yeah, it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't sound that bad. Sixty-two million over twenty years.
The biggest issue I think we have is the maintenance of the zone controller. That, that's a heavy lift. And so I, I, I have talked to the commissioners, they are not interested in paying even half. Right? I doubt that you guys would be into paying half. And the other thing, in my opinion, it's not worth it. There, there is a DTR administrator that basically controls our, you know, Chief Knoller was saying, well, we're going to lose control. Well, I hear that all the time. Well, we don't really have all that much control now. Right? The other day they just put Teller County on my zone. They didn't ask me. I had to sign some forms, right? So there is a DTR administrator. Eventually this state will have a statewide digital trunk radio system. And they will own all the zones. And I think that is a good thing. Right now, we're in the phase or the, the genesis of building that. Pueblo has theirs, Weld County has theirs, Pike's Peak is, is, people are paying for that one, Denver hat, the state owns that. So, so I think we're, we're moving in the right direction. I think ultimately, after I'm long gone, it'll be a statewide system, which it needs to be in order to keep everybody safe and communicating.
Okay. So when you said that, that, that the state might take that one over, so you're not looking, the six hundred and forty thousand is probably not going to hit us?
Yeah, the state's not going to take it over. I have to give it to the state.
Right.
I have to make the decision based on the best information I have as to whether or not that is the best thing for our community. And if the state takes it over, then we don't have to pay the six hundred and forty thousand.
Yeah, that's what she was saying. Yeah.
But that comes with a lot of different components. Do we give them the zone controller only? Do we give them the zone controller and our radio towers so they can maintain those as well? And if so, do we give them the three from the city? Does the city want to give them their three? So there's a lot of moving parts to this. We're just in the beginning stages and I just wanted you to know where we are. So that you have a working idea of what's happening.
All right. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Counselor Maestri.
Um, so this is zone six. Is that what our radio covers? Could you please tell me the boundaries of zone six?
I don't know that there are any boundaries.
I mean, do, do we service a certain area?
Pueblo's, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, we go from Pueblo to Kansas and we go from Pueblo to New Mexico and we go almost to Utah.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know. So would any of those counties and cities, would they have a part in maybe covering some of these costs?
If we went with the model that Pike's Peak has, yes.
Okay.
But then we would be responsible for capturing those costs. Yes.
Uh, Counselor, my answer taken.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If both of you are having trouble filling all of these positions in your departments, then why, how do we justify giving more money to the, to your budgets? Does that make sense? If you're not filling every position, every employee, how, how, how far down is the Pueblo PD? How many open positions?
I think we have twenty-five open positions as of today.
Yeah, so three hundred and three hundred and twenty each. And what about the sheriff's department, the jail?
I'm thirty-one down in my jail on seven on patrol.
Yeah, so how is it that you both can't come up with the six hundred and forty together?
Well, that would be a decision for my funding bodies, the county commissioners. Maybe they can. But that's not, I'm not a paying entity. Mike, the county commissioner, right, the county commissioners fund me.
See, why would you want to lower the level of police officers? You have, you're funded for whatever, one hundred and twenty-five, is it?
Two hundred and thirty-one.
Two hundred and thirty-one and you're twenty-five short. Why would you want to?
Because they're not getting filled.
Twenty-five police officers.
They're not getting filled and crime's not lowering.
Okay. Well, sir, this is my response to that. It would be that the goal is to fill those positions. And once we fill those positions, we wouldn't be able to pay the six hundred and forty thousand extra on our current budget. Now, if you gave us six hundred and forty thousand dollars in addition to our budget, we, we certainly could pay our portion or maybe the whole thing for the maintenance on the zone controller. But the, the issue is, we are running, this year we will run four academies. The goal is to fill those positions so that we can, we can do our job.
Do you foresee doing that?
I don't know that I'll get to two thirty-one, but I, I am optimistic that we will get very close to two thirty-one by the end of the year. Hopefully two twenty, two twenty-five, somewhere in there. I mean, I, that's like trying to guarantee that the Broncos will win the Super Bowl next year. But they got a good shot with Russell Wilson.
We, yes, they actually do.
We got a good shot with you too, Chief.
And what about sheriff's department? How, how many will you be down by the end of the year?
I don't know. I know that I'm hiring as fast as I can. That the, the financial piece that you're talking about, the money that, the openings that I currently have are salary savings to my funding bodies, so they still have that money. So they're not putting that money out until I actually fill one of my positions.
Or until you request for additional money?
No, the money's already there. The money's in my budget.
You just have to request it?
No, I requested at the end. So a sheriff's office is very, it's a sheriff's office and not a department. I'm not a department. The chief has a police department. I do not. I have a sheriff's office. And so I get my budget approved on December the fifteenth and then that's it for my funding body. So at the end of the year, my budget comes in after what I have requested. And then I perform my duties starting in January on that budget. And any money that I save, whether it be by not hiring someone or not having someone to hire, that money stays with the funding body, which is the county.
Great. And then we just requested on December fifteenth or prior to.
Uh, yeah, there's a whole budget hearing process. Correct.
Great. Thanks.
Other questions? I'm, I don't, I don't speak CSEP language. Can you clarify what a zone controller is?
The easiest way is it is, I call it the magic box. Because I'm with you, I don't really know how it works either. But basically when I key my mic right here, this digital signal goes to the zone controller and then it comes back to me. So that's, that's basically what it is. So if you're in Alamo City and you key your mic, that digital signal goes to this zone controller. And then it attaches to wherever I'm calling and then it comes back. That's really the easiest way to, that I've found to explain it.
Kind of like a cell tower. When you make a phone call, it goes to the tower and the tower completes the call and then it comes back through that tower to your phone.
But in this, it goes from the zone controller to the towers to get to, back to me, wherever I am.
Counsel.
And it was all part of nine eleven. Ultimately, it was all part of nine eleven that the number, number one, the, the number one thing that came out of nine eleven when they assessed what happened was that we didn't have interoperability, if you remember that. And so there was a huge push nationwide to get interoperability so that we can talk to each other. Because they found out during nine eleven, you can't talk to each other. And so that was the big push. And this is what came out of it.
That, and because of the chemical stockpile, the federal government, Congress decided that they were going to fund a preparedness program in the community. We have a first-class preparedness program. It's going to be incumbent upon us to keep it that way when CSEP goes away. Another item on top of this issue is going to be all of the people that are working out there. They're going to be out of a job at the end of the CSEP. So, uh, two thousand people, isn't it, that are working out there are going to be out of a job? And they're good paying jobs. So we're going to have to think about that.
One thing I would like to add on top of that, Counsel, and I apologize. But one of the costs that's not in this document is the amount of money that it would cost for us to continue the exercises that we do annually. And I, I don't know how the sheriff feels. I think I know how he feels. Those exercises are invaluable to our preparedness for any kind of catastrophe that happened here in this community. And to be able to continue those exercises on an annual basis would be an additional cost that I think is well worth investigating and, and funding, at least in part by the city. And, and, and the various other entities that would be involved. And, and something I think we ought to consider or have in the back of our mind. You know, we have a pretty active airport. There's always the possibility of, of some catastrophe happening related to that. There's active shooter issues. There's a number of things that these exercises would help prepare us for. So that when the real world event happens, we're not doing it for the first time.
True. Because it was a congressional mandate, basically, in Department of the Army, we should probably ask our congressional delegation to look into further funding. Because they started this mess, so to speak, you know what I mean? And we should, that's another funding source probably we should look into.
That's a good idea, you know.
Counselor Maestri.
Just out of curiosity, turning it over to the state, is there any job loss locally associated with that within the department?
We have configured it through the sustainability report to be one FTE that I would insist if I turn it over to the state that they keep to maintain it here.
Okay.
So yes and no.
Great. And go blue.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilman Forrest.
You know, I was thinking, based on Counselor Maestri, you're talking about maybe bringing other counties that we serve into the fold. It seems to me the county and the city would be in a position, we, we have about a year and a half now in, in hiring a, say, a consultant that knows how to bring all this together. It seems like we would save a lot of money for both the city and the county by letting everyone that can utilize this, this very, it's a gem. It's really, you know, it's really an emergency center that most cities our size would never have or a county our size would ever have. And it just seems to me that that might be an approach to do now. We have the time to do it. If the county commissioners would be willing to pay half and the city pay half, hire someone that could bring all these pieces together and allowing the apportionment of the cost to everyone, even outside our county. It sounds like their, Teller County you mentioned earlier was, was using the system. Why not, why not bring in all the counties to the east and to the south and to the fold and, and have them pay their fair share? So that, that.
Yeah, I think if you could define the scope narrow enough on that, that you, you may get some idea of what it would cost the other counties.
Counselor Warner.
But it's highly likely it'll be turned over to the state, correct?
I haven't decided yet.
Okay.
I haven't talked to you yet. I haven't, I haven't heard what you guys think.
So I don't, well, I don't know. It seems like your other presenter said that that's, sounded like it was highly likely.
That's one of the options.
So there'd be no reason to do a study if that's the highly likely thing that was, that's going to happen.
Well, we're meeting with OIT. OIT is not under DPS yet. They're, they're coming probably next month. So we're meeting with OIT upon their request. They want to see what we have. So we're meeting with them on the twenty-seventh and that's, I'm going to say this is what we have. There's not going to be any further discussion than that. And then we'll see what they, what they want. I mean, I think we have a lot of leverage, but at the same time, I think we have a lot of liability.
That's just the zone controller. That's not all the other bells and whistles that go along with.
That's correct. That's not the microwave, that's not the towers, that's not, you know, they're, they're going to see what, what we have. And then they'll, they'll either make a run for it or not.
If, if money wasn't an object, you, I think I hear you both say, we keep it here, not give it to the state.
Oh, I, no doubt.
Okay.
Yeah. But, but I also don't want to saddle you with, you know, bill that we can't pay.
Um, and you're having, Sheriff, you're having a CSEP exercise next week, aren't you?
Yes, ma'am.
When is that?
Uh, May the fourth, May fourth. And I think, let's see, we have some VIP, Councilman Floris, you're coming. Any of you, any of, anybody else wants to come, just let us know. We'll put you on the list. It's a VIP tour. It's, it's, it's very informative. It really, they, they fly in about a hundred and five FEMA evaluators to evaluate how we respond to a, to an exercise. And then they give a ninety-five page response back to us in about two or three months.
I was a volunteer in high school and I, by the end I was dead, so that wasn't fun.
You're one of the victims.
Yeah. So Sheriff Chief, how can we help you? It sounds like there, we, we can't, it, we're like, it's like a hurry up and wait situation.
From my perspective, it really, I'm, I'm so honored that you guys are interested, finally. Like I said, I took this over in oh-nine and I yelled from the top of the mountain for people to get ready. And I'll be quite honest with you, until this year, I didn't have the interest from the funding bodies that I felt we needed. And so I think it's fantastic. I think you need to read more about it. You need to ask more questions about it. You need to, you know, inform yourself and then we need to move forward. So I, I'm very happy with this.
You know, I think from my perspective, there's nothing that you can do for us right now. I think we need to work with the sheriff and Lori Penns and IT to see where we need to go and what we may need to do on our end of things and, and how that works out with the zone controller and all these things before we can really come before you and intelligently ask for or brief you on, on much more, to be honest with you. I want to be cognizant of your time and, and I think we have some homework to do before we get any further.
Okay.
And, and I'm always available for any kind of questions that you have or Lisa Shorter or anybody, so.
Okay. Thank you Sheriff Taylor. Thank you Chief Knoller for that presentation.
Thank you.
The next and final agenda item that we have then around COVID nineteen emergency loans. So Ms. Solano, whenever you are ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Counsel. And there's a two-part conversation surrounding the COVID loans. And first is to answer any questions with respect to the coronavirus relief fund and the PEDCO five million dollar reconciliation that I sent electronically to you last week. And then to ask the city attorney for assistance in the separation of the two conversations so that we are not in conflict of, of who, of what council members should and should not participate in the discussion of the, of the, of the emergency loans. So can I do this conversation in two parts? So, so first of all, last time we, we met, and I have a slide deck to remind everyone, all I did was update the date of the COVID emergency loans that were funded by the PEDCO five million dollars. And you asked for reconciliation of the five million dollars that I sent electronically. That was made up of a full listing that I also sent, multiple pages, it's sixteen pages of totaling five million, six hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars. That public document is available to anyone of the public. And we've distributed a handful of times, which is a complete listing of all the, the payments made out to individual small businesses in the way of loans, cash grants and outdoor dining amenities. The distribution is five point six million, but the PEDCO dollars just total five. So we went ahead and added the full disclosure of an amount that was distributed to small business, but really was not part of the PEDCO money. It was part of the CARES Act coronavirus relief fund money. And so in reconciling the five million, I said, I went ahead and sent you the full list of, of all of the small businesses that received. And so, um, in reconciling the five million, I said, I went ahead and sent you the full list of of all of the small businesses that received any resources. And then, um, I attempted, and I think that President Graham asked me for clarification to let you know how much of the, uh, of the loans and the grants, uh, were reimbursed by the Coronavirus CARES Act. And I used the word CARES Act and Coronavirus Relief Fund. And you saw me use the acronym CVRF and all of that intertwined. And, um, we were being, at the time of COVID, um, asked to reimburse, to request the reimbursements from DOLA as quickly as possible. So the initial reimbursement of the of the grant dollars, not the loans, but only the grant dollars was two million one hundred and nineteen thousand three hundred and ninety dollars. And we were one of the first cities to request a reimbursement of small business, um, support through the CARES Act because of the of the quick response that city council took through PEDCO dollars in getting those resources out to small business way before we ever heard that we had access to CARES dollars. Those care, these loans and grants started to go out as early as, um, late April and early May of twenty twenty. We heard about the CARES Act coming our way, not directly to municipalities like the ARPA dollars did. The CARES Act was funded only to cities directly with more than a half a million dollars in population. So here we sit at our hundred and thirteen, hundred and fourteen thousand, not knowing anything about the CARES Act or access to it. But the state of Colorado received CARES Act and only through Governor Polis's decision on how to spend the state um, allocation of CARES, did he make a determination that he was going to distribute it to counties. And the county should make agreements with municipalities within their, um, county. So the federal dollars went to the state, the state dollars to the county. Uh, city council and county commissioners had discussions about what was fair to distribute out of CARES dollars to the city. And the city's distribution of CARES dollars was something like five point six billion. And all those dollar figures started to sound like they were co-mingled and they were very separate PEDCO dollars versus CARES dollars. Towards the end of twenty twenty, uh, we also received another million dollars from CARES Act. And that provided for a second round of grants. But those grants, trying to get to, um, as many small businesses as we could, they went out in increments of only five thousand dollars each. There was not access to up to twenty thousand dollars in grants that that original PEDCO, um, money had, um, required. Our our cash grants out of two, from the PEDCO dollars was indeed two point nine million. We did not request reimbursement from, um, the state CARES Act dollars of the full two point nine. As by that time, the city was, um, in the middle of rent relief and hunger relief and, um, PPE, the Personal Protective Care, and all of, uh, the support for sick leave, for fire and police who were who were attract, attacked, attracting COVID. We were spending money on the new technology here so that potentially we would be ready for any, um, a remote, um, city council meetings that had to be done due to the COVID and social distancing. So we did indeed, um, only ask for reimbursement from the CARES Act back to the four thirteen PEDCO fund of the two point, um, one one nine million dollars. The, we did ask for CARES reimbursement of another nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand. But that didn't come from the original PEDCO source. It only came from the CARES. So CARES is a drawdown. They gave us a million and they said, draw it down, city. So we gave him, we turned in a nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars worth of, um, of small business support of five thousand dollar grants that they then turned around and reimbursed us for. And so the email then shows you the, um, reconciliation of both the five million in in PEDCO dollars and the reconciliation of the CARES dollars. Which was, um, two point nine from PEDCO funds. It was a full six point five. So the attachment that I send was the, and that looked like this, the full six point five million of our CARES dollars. And it was used for economic support of two point eight, our telework of a hundred and ninety-three, uh, public health of one point two million, a hundred thousand for housing support. Uh, PPE, that was the personal protective equipment of two hundred and forty-eight thousand. Administrative was a hundred and ninety-five thousand. And those were the COVID texts, do you recall, for the star, five-star program? As we were opening up businesses and if they followed the additional, um, uh, protocol, uh, there were, um, designated a five-star business and we had COVID texts out of our code enforcement that were, um, going out into the community to provide some training and to assist, um, small businesses and also to watch that they were in compliance. We had a budget diversion personnel, which was actually those eligible for unemployment reimbursement due to COVID. That those were firefighters that actually attracted COVID well on the job. Um, we had food programs for hunger relief for homeless and, um, those, um, not accessible to food. We had our payroll, um, from the operations center. And they talked about the operations center today. We actually had someone assigned out of the fire department there, um, from, um, I'm sorry, it was from January to May. A small business assistant was that second round of the five million dollars plus all the amenities for um, heaters and parklets and outdoor lighting and tables and chairs. And it was intended to extend the restaurant season. Um, uh, it passed the summer and into the fall in our, of course, our climate that allowed for it. So we spent money there. And we also spent, um, um, some medicals, just five million one hundred dollars. And the categories were designated by the state, by the CARES Act. And that five thousand one hundred is actually we we, our share of the rent for the testing site at the Pueblo Mall. So I provided the reconciliation of the full six point five. And then I also just showed you the different reimbursement requests that totaled that amount of money. We actually, uh, got down to five dollars and eighty-three cents. And we called the state DOLA and said, okay, we're good. And spent it all timely. It had to be encumbered, um, by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-one. They extended it for all of twenty twenty-one, where initially it was hurry up. You have six, seven months to spend this, uh, from August to December of twenty twenty. And then we were all waiting for, you know, that for 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 information from Congress to say across the country, we can't get this spent. And our COVID is, uh, the pandemic is still upon us and requesting an additional extension to take a breath and finish spending the allocations that came our way. So they extended it for all of twenty twenty-one, which required then, um, in to be encumbered before December thirty-first of twenty twenty-one. That's the story behind PEDCO's five million that, you know, we we have the four thirteen fund in the city. We collect the, um, the PEDCO half-cent sales tax in the city and we retain it in the city and it's part of the city's single audit. And when we received money back from the state through the Coronavirus Relief Fund, we deposited it back in the four thirteen fund, that two point one million. And it is, it is rather confusing and I lived it at the time. So it is, um, that was my, my email was the attempt to to clarify. And if you have any questions and we want to sit down together, or we can go through and I can ask Anna. Um, but, um, is there any questions this evening?
Councilor Graham?
Yeah, I I have quite a few questions since I just, I can't seem to get them answered. I mean, I've been at this for about nineteen days and I still can't get the questions answered through the mayor's office. So was all five million dollars from the PEDCO fund used?
Hundred percent of it. So. And it was, it was evidenced through the sixteen-page, um, detailed, um, packet of information that I sent on which businesses received what.
Except there's not five million dollars being spent there.
No, there's five million six hundred and eighty-four thousand.
But those two bottom lines that we have on there, the chairs and the tables and the nine hundred and thirty-three?
Nine hundred and ninety-three.
The nine hundred and ninety-three, those were Corona virus relief funds. So that came out of the six point five. So that wasn't out of the five million dollar budget.
Some of it was, some of it was. The record, the the document of sixteen pages is just the distribution. When, um, taxpayers asked what businesses received resources, that's the document that it sent. And it's, it goes over, uh, the five million dollars. So the excess of six hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars was part of the CARES Act dollars that was reimbursed first expenditures for small business support.
I I did the math. There's not five million dollars there. There's one point four million in loans and two point nine in grants, which leaves a remainder of six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And then if the, um, two point one million was reimbursed back to PEDCO, my second question is, out of the two point nine, if the two point one million was reimbursed, what happened to the eight hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars? Where did that come out of?
Uh, CARES Act dollars actually just, we drew down from our five point six million. And when we received the drawdown of two point one, instead of putting it back into the city, it went back to the PEDCO dollars.
But we're still missing eight hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars.
The sixteen-page document is a listing of who received it.
Uh, yeah, I I've been over it and and I have the information from PEDCO. The only two point one million dollars was ever reimbursed into their account.
Correct.
But two point nine was taken from them in grants. So there's eight hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars missing. That's aside from the cash grants from the the COVID fu, the COVID fund.
It wasn't, it's not missing. When PEDCO gave the approval for city council to approve the use of five million dollars, it was not ever intended to be repaid.
So where's the money?
So in the process of of supporting small businesses and using Coronavirus Relief Fund dollars in all the other places, we were only able to ask for two point one million dollars of, out of the six point five for reimbursement of PEDCO dollars. The rest of it was used for all the other, um, sources of, um, support for pandemic relief.
Right, that still doesn't answer the question about the eight hundred and twenty-two. The money, the the reconciliation that you gave us, you're using the money in several, several different pockets, several different, the coronavirus relief fund is completely separate from the PEDCO funds. Um, the coronavirus relief funds is, I mean, was so much later on than than the PEDCO funding. My my question is, there's one point five million dollars, you know, missing from PEDCO, from from these funds. And so if you're going to ask these small businesses to pay this money back, this one point two million dollars, where is this money going? Where's the interest for this money going? Because as far as, you know, PEDCO's reports go, they do not have the money. I've talked to the president of PEDCO, I've talked to the treasurer of PEDCO. And up until about two weeks ago, for about ten days, they told me that they hadn't received the money, period. And about ten minutes before our meeting started, I got an email from Jeff Shaw saying they just had found two point one million dollars. So this is kind of what's drawing my attention to this is I'm getting several different, I'm I'm getting several different, being told several different things. I can't get a straight answer on where this money is. This money is being, this money was being used in several different ways. This five million dollars has never been paid back to PEDCO.
Well, the five million dollars wasn't intended to ever be paid back to PEDCO. But because we had access to Coronavirus Relief Fund dollars, city council at the time, um, uh, required uh, that we ask the Coronavirus Relief Fund reimbursement request because it was intended for small business relief. To the extent we could to ask for reimbursement from that fund and then gave that back to the PEDCO four thirteen fund. And when the state reimbursed the city, it did go into the four thirteen fund. There's one point four million dollars of loans out of the five million that, of course, had, we've not collected. And so PEDCO doesn't have any of that one point four back, including any interest that would be paid.
So when you add the two point one and the one point four, though, you're still short one point four million dollars.
Yes.
So where's that?
Those were distributions out to grants, um, of small businesses, uh, that were not reimbursed by by the coronavirus.
That's only eight hundred and twenty-two thousand, not one point five million.
I think we probably want to sit then, um, with the detail with you so we could go over where those are.
I mean, I've asked for the detail for two weeks and this is, this is what I've got. And then, you know, I got this, um, this Corona release, relief fund, um, the reconciliation from it. And I was having a really hard time understanding it and, you know, we were emailing back and forth. But so then I just decided to go back and watch the city council meeting from December twenty-eighth. And I found that you put a presentation on along with Shelley Durham. And I found this in your presentation about how the six point five million dollars was spent. And the line items are hundreds of thousands of dollars off from your budget that you gave.
The line items, um, that were submitted for reimbursement were submitted by the categories that were required by, uh, the CARES Act?
Well, this is small business report received three point nine million dollars. And that your, your reconciliations don't show that at all. And then it also says that, you know, PPP, PPE was on your reconciliation, two hundred and forty-eight thousand. On this reconciliation, you presented two years ago, a hundred and ninety-one thousand. So I guess I'm just confused on why we have two separate reconciliations of six point five million dollars. How we're going to ask these businesses? I know I have a loan and I know you, some of you think I'm up here preaching because I have a loan. But there's some serious discrepancies in accounting work that's being done. And I think the money is being used in more ways, more ways than was stated. And, I mean, this all just started from me asking a simple question, was PEDCO reimbursed? And like I said, they told me for weeks that they were not reimbursed up until a few minutes before our last city council meeting where I got an email stating that they had only received two point one out of the five million dollars.
We we need to clarify one thing right now. And that is that PEDCO, they don't, they don't control this money. The city does. That you you needed to be talking to our accounting department. We have the fund. PEDCO doesn't have a penny of this fund.
Oh, I have, I've been trying to get the information and I, and I haven't got any of it from our.
No, I'm talking about, you said you were talking to PEDCO.
I, I did ask PEDCO if they received.
They have, they have no.
She's not, she's not.
They they get a recount, they get an accounting report, Dennis, that we've, that we've seen. And so Mr. Shaw has, the treasurer has this information at PEDCO. And they've told me that they didn't receive this money. That's where I'm going with this. And then I.
Which is true. The money, the money goes back into the city fund.
Not, it shouldn't go into the general budget. It should go back into the PEDCO fund, the half-cent sales tax fund. Essentially, the city just took all this money.
Can you explain how, uh, the PEDCO fund is handled by, with internally within the city?
I'm aware how it's handled.
I think, I think.
Well, it's the four thirteen fund.
Right.
Yeah. That's, that's the half-cent fund.
Right.
The four thirteen fund.
And my laws had to be changed to take this five million dollars out in twenty twenty, correct? To take this money out by the city council. So essentially, the city is just taking all of this money back in from this five million dollars and not putting it back to PEDCO. Is that correct? Is that what we're saying? Is that what you're saying, Dennis? Is it just going back to the city?
Well, the grants, obviously, uh, went to the businesses.
No, they got reimbursed by the federal government. I'm asking why that money didn't go back to PEDCO?
Well, one thing, when I was on the council, uh, the past council, we made this decision before we knew we were going to get any money. That the decision to get the five million dollars, our intent was to to pass it all out to help the small businesses. We had no knowledge that we were going to get any money from the federal government. That was, uh, you know, that that was, uh, something that came later. And for us to kind of replenish and backfill what we sent out was an opportunity the government gave us by giving us more money.
Backfill into the city or to the federal, city's general fund or back to the PEDCO fund?
It's, it's, uh, it's, it's, I guess, it's not general fund. It's, it's, it's fourteen, four thirteen.
So, so if I can say something, uh, the the other council, all all of us sat up here and we stated that we wanted that back in the PEDCO fund. So that is on recording somewhere. And also Nick even said, uh, in a recent meeting that we reimbursed PEDCO, which we can find on video as well. So if it's not there, it should be there.
You know, we just helped, we we helped, what, six hundred and sixty businesses in town? I'm trying to see where, what the nefarious situation here is. What is it?
I'm trying to figure out why the numbers don't match up. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Well, we all, yeah, you deserve an answer to that. I agree.
I I I think, I I think I've been digging, I've been asking questions. I've been, I've been following up and I can't get an answer. When I get the answer, the numbers don't match up. So I'm a little bit hesitant to believe where this money is going to go if you guys choose to have these loans paid back, where this interest is going to go.
Well, so far, no interest has been charged.
But it will be one percent. And according to Ms. Solano, somebody did pay their loan back plus interest already, which I haven't been able to find anywhere on any information I've been given.
Correct. One business paid back ten thousand dollars.
And so did that ten thousand go back into PEDCO plus interest? Do we know what that amount was? Do we know what day that happened?
I do.
Well, I'd like to see that. I mean, I'd like, I'd like to have my questions answered and not, and not just, you know, be giving a spreadsheet that doesn't even add up to the spreadsheet. from the presentation that was presented. I mean, these numbers, they're hundreds of thousands of dollars off.
Uh the, I'm, and I will reconcile then all of them if you show me what you're looking for and ask the finance office to to assist me to do that. Um, the the four thirteen fund, I, we can also verify the two million one, two million one hundred thousand dollars went directly to the four thirteen fund at the close of last year after the estate reimbursed. And one point four of the five is still outstanding in loans.
Right.
And so I think you're looking for from five million, where is the six hundred thousand that was distributed to small businesses that the city received reimbursement for that did not go back to Pedco?
Yeah, I'm looking for that, and I'm looking for the eight hundred and twenty two thousand from the grants that were reimbursed, the difference from the two point, the two point one to the two point nine. Cause it, what, that money is not the cor- the coronavirus relief fund. Because if you put that in with the other two numbers, you're way over budget, you're three hundred thousand dollars over budget.
Yeah, it was not reimbursed. The, we only requested reimbursement from the first round of
Where's them, did the city eat that money?
No, it went out to small business. We didn't ever receive it back from anywhere. It wa- it came in from Pedco and it went out to small business, and we didn't ask for reimbursement from the CARES dollars because it went to other sources. And so we only at the time asked for two point one million dollars of reimbursement from CARES that went back into Pedco.
So that eight hundred and twenty two thousand should be less than five million in the Pedco account right now.
But the only Pedco money we got put back to Pedco's wa- is what we were reimbursed for.
That's two point one.
Two point one.
And one point four is outstanding.
One point four is outstanding, and the difference between then is about six hundred and some thousand.
And that money was given
To small businesses that were not then asked to be reimbursed.
And one
That wasn't that called round two?
Round two.
Round two.
So still, we're missing six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That's completely unaccounted for. Plus, I still think we're missing eight hundred and twenty two. And the relief funds do not match up, period. And Pedco has two point one million.
Correct. And the back to the thirteen fund, the Pedco um was reimbursed two point one million.
And are you able to provide us with some kind of transaction?
Sure.
To show, to show that it was transferred back into that account?
Yes.
Cause it's just strange that, you know, for two weeks, they told me that they didn't receive any money, and then right before the council meeting, they said that they had found it. Which I don't know how they would find it, since the city controls the reporting.
Yeah, correct. They receive a, an accounting from the city every, every uh month. And so I, we'd have to go back to the month that the CARES Act dollars reimbursed um to let um Pedco know that the two point one million was in fact redeposited into the four thirteen fund. And 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 if finance will have that transaction and date.
And when the ten thousand dollars plus interest was repaid, we've repaid back to Pedco. Cause that's nowhere to be found either in any other reconciliates.
Yeah, the the ten thousand dollars um that was uh repaid on that, on that grant, we will find where it went back to Ped. I don't have that in front of me. I don't know the date. And I have a lot of paperwork here in front of me from finance, but that one I do not have.
And how can we get line items on exactly what the coronavirus relief funded back to the city for the grants?
Ask again.
How can we get um, you know, line item paperwork showing exactly what was funded back to the city through the COVID relief fund?
Uh, yes, uh all of the the information on the um reconciliation that she's showing you, the the request for reimbursement, each of those has backup line by line item on whether it was reported out to neighborworks or Catholic charities or Walmart for backpacks for homeless. She has the full detail of the spreadsheet of every single one of the reimbursements in finance.
And we can get that, a copy of that as
You can, you can.
And those are just those DOLA, those
The very bottom, more DOLA request for reimbursement, number one, two, three, four, five um all the way through um the nine hundred and eighty eight thousand. And then uh request one, two, and three out of that subsequent one million.
And what was the nine hundred and eighty eight thousand on that page?
Uh, the nine hundred and eighty eight thousand on that page is the a second round of small business um five thousand dollar grants. That did not come, those were not sourced from Pedco. They were sourced from this one million dollar um subsequent grant from the state.
Right, so having those line items under the Pedco is incorrect. By the first reconciliation that you gave us, you had those, then minus the six thirty.
It was, it's six hundred and thirty four over. So it, you know, it is off a couple hundred thousand. It could be right. But the distribution of the of the sixteen page document is again a listing of every individual business that received either amenities, a grant, or a loan.
Okay, and then one more question. The one hundred and eighty five thousand for the nonprofits, did the city eat that? Or where did that money come from that was forgiven already?
Pedco.
So that, that won't be paid?
It will not be paid back.
Back to Pedco.
Yeah, no, well, none of the five thousand was intended to be repaid back. We were just fortunate to have received federal money that came through the state, that came to this county, that came to the city that then the direction from city council was to pay back the four thirteen fund. That's where it was sourced. But it was not intended to be repaid back, except for the loans. The loans were absolutely intended to be repaid back to Pedco when, I think, when the city um approved the distribution of loans. The grant dollars were not intended to be paid back. Uh, just the first round, the two point one million, we received reimbursement from the, from luckily from fair CARES federal dollars and that went back to the four thirteen fund, that we didn't know.
It it wasn't reimbursement from CARES Act. City council decided that money would reimburse Pedco.
Yeah, you did.
CARES Act was CARES money. We decided use, use that money to pay the Pedco fund back.
You required
Co, but the fourteen, four thirteen.
Pedco didn't decide, but Required it, the legal review required it, and the accountants, when they closed the year, required it. So collectively, it was the three um au- au- authority um organizational authorities that said that money sourced from Pedco, it has to go back to the four thirteen, but.
And city council decided that?
Yes.
Yeah. That money came from the feds.
Uh, you know, I'm gonna take that sixteen page document and separate it into the totals so that um you can all see what was the two point one nine million, what was the second round dollars, what is the amenities? So that you can tie, can tie it exactly to what was reimbursed and what was distributed that was not reimbursed. Because it's now just in total.
The other day, um at the last time that we had this discussion, I had asked you um when were these loans taken out? And you had said throughout, or someone had said throughout the year, I can't remember if it was you or Dan or the mayor. Um, but now today, you're telling me um April and May is when the loans were completed. Is that correct?
The first loan request, I think, uh and I have the ordinance in front of me here. So let me find the data of the first five thousand dollar, five million dollar ordinance. I brought the ordinances with me this evening. The ordinance for the five million dollars was dated April thirteenth of twenty twenty. So after the five million dollar ordinance, it took some um organizational planning uh to determine how to process it and how to establish the requests uh for loan and or grants um uh through the technology. And then to establish the review team externally, and they were a, a banker, a CPA, and a business person, I think, for the three. So each of those applications then by round of, just by internal control of the numbers, went out to those three that um reviewed the application, that made recommendations um to the, to the mayor for um for awarding either the loan or the grant. So that had to start in sometime in um late April, early May of twenty twenty.
So everyone who took out a loan was under the impression that we were just under a thirty day lockdown. Cause we were, that's what we were doing at that time, and those lockdowns continued throughout the rest of the year, correct? The other thing is, did we have the opportunity? We didn't know it at the time when we were distributing the Pedco monies um that we would have the opportunity to be reimbursed. Did we have uh the opportunity to be reimbursed for the loan monies also?
You know, I cannot recall CARES Act rules. Um, and so the first um grants uh came out of um in checks in August. And the mayor was after us all, all summer. We wanna get this money out to small business. And I do not recall if the CARES Act provisions um provided for reimbursement, if there was a loan to a small business.
Yeah, I'd have to go back and look at the meetings, but I recall that when with this was up for discussion that we were entitled to get all of the five million dollars back, or whatever the amount was. Yeah, um that, and that we um were entitled to do that. And I'm kind of wondering, um was that just a decision made by council that we didn't? Because
I I think at the time, there were all the other things you see um that uh did support, that were supported by the pandemic uh relief out of CARES that we found ourselves needing in the community. Uh like utility relief and rent relief and um hunger relief and um care for the homeless, the technology that was necessary to support distance learning of the PPE for police, the PPE for fire, the sick leave for um our staff, all of those other costs came at the same time.
And um, but you were able to put in a dollar amount for what you were reimbursed.
Each one of those reimbursements had to have uh the back, the background, which I think had had an initial audit and now a full audit at the closure of twenty twenty. And the twenty twenty one audit is happening now.
Mm-hmm, okay. Um, how much, I mean, we talk about things not having to be be paid back. When Pedco's money was initially put out, it was about helping our community, and I'm just kinda seeing trying to understand why we turned it around and, you know, we did loans and we did interest. When you're, you know, you're stating that the full intent was to not have to pay those monies back. And now we're, you know, go ahead.
Um, that was just a spin, um um actually because the mayor wanted to keep that money in the general fund. And that's when all of council said, no, we need that. We want that to go back to Pedco.
Okay.
That was just the re- the reimbursement amount you Yeah, this whole, this whole spin of, well, we didn't know um at the time, we didn't think we were gonna get paid ba- paid back. So now we can keep it because we didn't think we were gonna get paid back. That was a spin to keep it in the general fund.
I see. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Kogosik, did you have something to say?
In answer to uh councillor Maestri's question regarding reimbursement, we had to go through DOLA. DOLA was administering all the CARES Act money. DOLA would not allow reimbursement of loans. It just, it can't happen is as a matter of law. In in retrospect, should all of these have been grants? Maybe, I don't know. But the decision was made that we're going to make loans and make grants. Once we made the loan, it was not eligible for reimbursement uh through DOLA. And in terms of the timeframe, I personally handled every loan. And uh, you know, the promissory note, the loan agreement, the grant agreement, the personal guarantees were all personally done with, by me, the way it should have been. So the timeframe is April, May, June, I believe, maybe even in August. Uh, we, we uh, we, we made uh grants and loans. So certainly in July, maybe not August, but April through June i- is when the loan documentation was handled.
And then October came about, and they said, we have some money still. If if you can spend so much more money, ask us for more money and you can spend it. We asked for a million dollars, and that's where the five million dollar grants came out. And we thought we had to do that fast. We had no idea January was gonna come around, and it was gonna give us a whole other year. So between October and December, those additional round two, five mil- five thousand dollar grants went out very quickly to small businesses for assistance.
Let me
So
One, one point, cause I I think we need to make it.
Okay.
These are city funds coming from the four thirteen account. These are taxpayer monies. Um, council can uh forgive these loans. Council can convert them to grants. And then there's no response. That's within your authority because this is city money. There's, there's no federal money uh involved here. Obviously, is, if a loan is forgiven, then the IRS will be notified a ten ninety nine loan forgiveness form will be filed. And the taxpayer will be responsible for paying tax because loan forgiveness under the Internal Revenue Code is income.
Okay, so could we had, turn them um to grants in, in order to get them qualified for DOLA? So if we can do that now, we can do that then?
No, once, once DOLA sees a promissory note in a loan agreement, the die is cast. It's set in stone.
And and also the coronavirus relief fund time period is closed.
Counselor winner.
But you're not, the DOLA, uh Pedco basically um used that money to keep businesses um afloat. So the money, the money from CARES um would go back to Pedco. Their money from CARES is not looking at every individual loan or grant that we came out. So there's no reason you can't refund Pedco. Doesn't have anything to do with DOLA.
Well, the money came from DOLA.
Well, it came from CARES, but they're
Through DOLA. DOLA was the gatekeeper.
We, we didn't give DOLA a, 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 a copy of everybody's loan. We did. You did. Loan, but their grant. Anything we reimbursed for, we had to have backup documentation. For the two million one hundred and nineteen thousand, we provided the list of of the businesses for sourcing, um who we distributed money to. And not the loans, because we weren't gonna be reimbursed for loans. But of the grants, we um have, we have the backup file for them. And that's why I'm able to give you the spreadsheet of everything out of making up every one of those reimbursements.
What was the thought process of determining of the five million, who was gonna get grants and who was gonna get loans? I mean, we're helping people, so why wasn't it all
Limitation. Uh, I think the grants were limited to twenty thousand and uh the loans up to one hundred thousand. So it was small business uh determined independent.
Counselor Flores, I think that you had something to say?
No, not at this point.
Counselor winner.
Well, um, I don't recall council ever talking about loans. I just know that that program kinda came to us. And we were all kinda shocked uh saying, well, these, these are loans. Some of them are loans. So we really didn't, council didn't know, didn't have any part of that. It was just kind of handed to us, this is what we're doing.
Well, I
If you recall.
I respectfully disagree. Um, that was, the whole program
What I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, there wasn't a conversation in council chambers
Counselor, then I'll let you speak. There was a resolution done saying we are going to make five million dollars available in loans and in grants. And
What I am saying is, the council did not have a discussion for that resolution. That's what I'm telling you.
Finished. Might be helpful for you to listen to my response rather than argue. The resolution and the ordinances which council passed after being fully informed approved loans and grants. We invited the public to invite, to submit applications for loans and grants. I can pull the ordinances and resolutions for you. The mayor decided that those applications should be reviewed by an independent body. And they were. Based on those recommendations, I approved the loan and grant documents. And they were also approved. Council had, was involved at every step
What I'm saying
Conception through execution.
What I'm saying, and we can even prove that there was no work session discussing how we
I'm saying, and we can even prove that there was no work session discussing how we wanted those funds to go out. Sure, we got a resolution, but that was the first we saw that that was going to include loans. Our intent on council was to give that money away, is what I'm saying. There was no discussion about that.
I am sure council would not approve a resolution without being fully informed.
That is not what I'm saying. Does everybody understand what I'm saying? Okay, so we said, we said on council, we were like $5 million. It came back as a resolution with grants and loans. There was no discussion among council members about loans. It came, all of that came, I'm answering Counselor Maestri's question. She said, how did you come about this? It came about us to a resolution with no discussion prior to the resolution. Does that make sense?
Counselor, can see it?
Yeah, but. We directed administration to come forward with a program by which we could spend $5 million helping our businesses. We didn't go into the minutia of how we were going to do it. We directed administration to come up with a program by which we could do this job. That's, no, we didn't sit here and, and discuss every intimate detail as to how that program was going to work. We directed them, they came back with a program, we voted on it, the resolution was passed.
Right, that was the answer I was giving Counselor Maestri. But when we say, when we say, hey, come on. When we say that we didn't know we were going to get it back, that was part of it as well. Because we thought originally that $5 million was not going to include loans. So that's another part of it as well.
No, that's, no, that's not true. Because we directed administration to come up with the program for loans and for grants.
Ms. Solano, I'm not sure if we've covered everything that you initially wanted us to provide direction on.
Only with, only in the event that council's finished with this portion of, of the, of the conversation before you move to, I think, the city attorney's explanation of any recusal of the next conversation about, where to from here with the outstanding 33 loans.
So you'll get those answers to?
Yes, we're going to schedule a time together. So come in and visit with finance and, and I'll show you the 413 fund and where the $10,000 distribution, excuse me, recovery of that loan came in. Or, or, or it had to be a loan. It came back in from one of the small businesses and what finance did with that when it occurred. So we'll schedule a one-on-one and ask finance to open up books and records for us. And so the next portion of the discussion, Dan.
There, there is one issue and one issue only where certain council members may have a conflict of interest. And that issue is, shall the city forgive the loans? Or grant another deferment? Or how do you want to handle the loans to members of council? Their family, their businesses? That's the only issue on which there is a conflict of interest. But it's not just the city ethics code that applies. State statutes, both civil and criminal apply if you have a conflict of interest and participate in the decision-making process. And that process is, is going to begin tonight. And it's up to certain members of council to disclose that they are a recipient, their spouse or family members are recipients of the loans. They have a conflict of interest, they need to recuse and leave the room. But it's just that issue. All the questions that Council President Graham asked were entirely proper in her role as being a member of council. But it's just on this one issue, how do we handle the loan?
So I'll be accusing myself at this.
But, but she, she doesn't have to leave the room. You can't kick her out of a public meeting, so she can be in the audience.
Based on what authority?
When?
I'm, I'm waiting for the authority. Have, have you read the state statutes?
When?
Have you read the cases dealing with the conflict of interest? Have you?
I have one question, Mr. Kogosik. When Counselor Martinez was still in the work session as part of the discussion for the premium pay, that didn't, that wasn't a conflict of interest since she had a financial gain?
Refuse, restate the question.
Counselor Martinez works for the health department. When the city was going to fund monies for her pay and she was part of the discussion just recently, she did not recuse herself. So I'm asking, is that not the same thing since she has the same kind of financial gain?
She should have recused.
As I do.
Yes, she should have recused.
So now what? No, she left during, she left during the vote, but she did not, she, she was here for all the discussion that we had on it. So I'm asking why I can't be for the discussion since Counselor Martinez was here for the discussion for her premium pay? She received financial monies from the city?
Yeah, that was, that, that was an error. There was also one error. I think there was one other instance where two members of council had a conflict and didn't leave the room. I'm trying to remember.
I have no problem leaving, but I really think.
They didn't leave the room and they actually voted.
Yeah, I, I have no problem leaving. That's not what this is about, but I think that there's, there's not fair treatment amongst this board. I mean, you're, there's no consistency here. You're the city attorney, you're supposed to be giving us direction. And Counselor Martinez was allowed to stay when she had financial things going on gain and.
I'll have to review the tape.
And I'm being asked to leave, so it's not.
Also, also Counselor Martinez and myself and Stoller had a conversation. And Stoller said that you had to step down from the dais and you could sit in the public. So I think there's a lot of confusion.
So when, when you say Stoller, who are you referring to?
Yeah, so Mr. Kogosik, the last, when we were voting on the ARPA presentation.
I'm sorry, who's, who stole?
Marissa, the city clerk.
Oh, okay.
And I just wanted clarification on what I should be doing for, for that vote. She did give the guidance that I could remain in the room. I just had, I had to leave my authority position on, on the dais, but I could remain in the room.
That was, that was incorrect legal advice.
Counselor Jagger from your office also stated the same thing to me when Ms. Winter had her complaint. She was allowed to stay in the diocese, or she was allowed to stay in the audience.
Yeah, that's actually in an email.
Well, that didn't involve a direct financial conflict of interest like we have here.
So I accept your dismissal for Counselor Graham.
I don't feed from the trough. The trough. I directed my family not to get a loan or a grant. That you won't find any.
So there was the direction then just provided by Mr. Kogosik around that was, is, are we satisfied then to move on?
Yes, I, I think council and Ms. Graham are in compliance with the law.
Thank you, Mr. Kogosik. Ms. Solano.
Thank you, Madam Chair and City Council. I do have one bit of information that Counselor Flores asked for me to bring today. And I got it late in the afternoon with respect to sales tax licenses that were new in the city and sales tax licenses that were closed in the city. And I only was able to go back to 2019, 20 and 21. And in 2019, there were 62 more closures than there were openings of sales tax licenses in the city for small businesses. In 2020, there was a positive 38. There were more new sales tax licenses than there were closures. And in 2021, there was 137 more new sales tax licenses than there were closures. And Counselor Flores asked if we could go back to 2017. And in sales tax, she wasn't able to go back that far, go as quickly as we wanted today. So I hope that's the information that you were, you were wanting.
Just to clarify why I asked that, that question is that our intent was to try to save our businesses. And every year, do we know, the one other question I had asked was how many?
Yes.
Businesses there were? What was that number?
Oh, she doesn't have the total. These are only the new ones and the closed ones.
No, and I'm talking about just the, the, the gross number.
She didn't, she wasn't able to pull those today. So the new ones, though, were 469 new in 2019, 329 new in 2020 and 180 new in 2021.
Yeah, and the reason I asked the question is that I was curious as to whether or not we were successful, you know, in helping our businesses. And by, by contrasting the last five years and seeing if the number of businesses we have, I'm just throwing out a number, 10,000 businesses in the city of Pueblo. You would normally have so many that go out of business for lots of reasons, exclusive of COVID. People go into business and don't know what they're doing, or they've filed bankruptcy, or they don't get any customers, whatever the reasons are. I wanted to see if there was a trend. And you can see that in 1920 and 21, I've got to believe that the 219 number really reflects the amount of people that were going out of business probably the last two years. But you can see that we, we had, we were successful in helping our businesses in, in a certain way. I look at all the list of the grants and stuff, most of those businesses are all in business right now. Right, and while you can see that in 2021, we had a positive 137. So the intent was really, I think, accomplished. And that's something that the city, you know, not many, not many cities had a piggy bank like we do, the half-cent sales tax. And again, I want to emphasize, this has nothing to do with PEDCO. They have nothing to do with this fund. It's the city and it's the seven of us that decide what happens to that fund. And we keep calling it the PEDCO fund. To me, it's the half-cent sales tax fund. So, you know, I, I, I wanted to, I still think that information is going to be important and hopefully we'll get it and we'll see that, that, that happened. But there's very few cities that had that opportunity. And I, I think that we did the right thing. And when we set us, when we made the ordinance change to, to offer our businesses five, you know, $5 million, the, the community knew that that was available, they applied for it. And then we also had the ability to lend people money. And, but I, I, I want you guys to, I've just written some notes here just to show you that there was never any intent to forgive the loans throughout this whole process. And imagine had we said, anybody that wants a loan, come forward and we're going to forgive it. You know, forgive you for it. And at the end, we wouldn't have had enough money and for the next 10 years for that. So there was never any intent from the very beginning to forgive those loans. But get a load of this. The, these are numbers that are significant. Of the 34 for-profit businesses, those 34 businesses got a half a million dollars in grants, either in round one or round two or in the amenities. And all that does not include the amenities. That the amenities amounted to 30, 33,000 above that. So all of these, and all of these people, these businesses that borrowed money, it was for a specific purpose. They needed equipment, maybe they needed to put in a drive-up window, whatever their reason was. But they knew that they were promising to pay that money back. And it's not as though we didn't help them in addition to that. And, and you can go in there and see that every business of the 34 businesses, it, it came to a little bit more than $500,000, either in small grants, one person got, I think, $75,000 in, in grants. So, you know, I, I, I can't see this council forgiving these loans. The other interesting thing is I probably know 20 of those businesses that were on that list. I have not got one call, not one call from any of those businesses asking me, you know, cut me a break, Dennis, why don't you forgive the loans? Because they knew they signed a promise to pay it back. I mean, you think, we haven't, other than, we, we did have one individual business that came to public forum and asked that we forgive the loans. And that's how this whole thing started. How, how the forgiveness thing even started is, is a little weird to me. Because nobody's asked me of any of the businesses that we lent this, this money to. Look at the benefits they got. One, they haven't, they, and we wanted them to, we wanted to be very liberal. They haven't paid any interest going on two years now. That's a benefit. They were, they, they didn't get the kind of scrutiny on the loan like you'd get at, at a bank. We made it as easy as possible. The assets that they purchased with this money remains in their business. It's still an asset to them and, and they're going to have taxes to have to pay on that. But they also get the benefit of depreciation. So I, I think if, if you're looking for direction, you just have to go back to, to the original city council meeting with the old city council that said, even though it was unofficial, that we made that decision. Was it December, November? I don't remember.
It was July of 2021.
We made the decision back then that the loans were not going to be forgiven. In fact, it was Counselor Macaulay Bachecha that made the amendment to saying, let's defer, you know, the interest for another year, which I thought, and, and everybody was agreeable to that. Anyway, that's my story. I, I think, you know, we, we, you know, we, we start collecting on those, on those loans. I would, I'm sorry. Thank you, I guess. I would, I would suggest that we, we put together an ordinance to have those loans start to be repaid at the beginning of next year to give everybody, including the mayor's office, finance enough time to just start getting the payments organized and things like that.
Counsel winner.
Okay, so how we got to forgiving loans is the mayor came to us and he said he had some nonprofits that were asking for forgiveness. And I'm, I'm pretty sure that was the zoo, the art center and a theater company. Were there any others? Okay, what was the fourth one? Oh, Arts Alliance, okay. So when you, when you look at, you know, the, the organization of the art center, none of those people working there were without a paycheck. Not one of those people working there was paying the electrical bill. Same with the zoo. So all of those people were taken care of with tax dollars, with our money. When you look at small businesses, they're never going to see that money again. Like the pantry brings in 27 grand a day. That money is gone, gone. So, so when you, when you think of it that way, I, I think, I think they need forgiveness.
Counsel Maestri.
Well, I think before we make any decisions, we should always, you know, Ms., President Graham brought up some good points. We should see a full reconciliation, what's going on. Because I'm, I'm not really happy with the ARPA reconciliation. We, we did the math in our head and all of a sudden the mayor.
Uh, we we did the math in our head and all of a sudden the mayor, I, when you said thirty nine thousand, after we knew that the grocery store had returned their money, you know, the mayor already had decided how he wanted us to spend it. And so you should have probably came to us with the dollar amount that would, I mean, you, 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 and he inserted that. And again, we're not looking, um, to sustain of programs through ARPA funds. We're giving one-time opportunities, just like we did with everything else. And so I think if we need a full reconciliation audit of how how these are all playing out and where the monies are, I think before we make any decisions, we should see that audit.
Counselor Atencio.
Yeah, I was in business for thirty three years. Not once did a bank come to me and say, hey, I want to forgive your loan because I think you're a good guy. Um, also, your point that a business was bringing in money during the shutdown, they had no expenses. They didn't pay, uh, wages, they didn't buy.
And 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 I should, I should say that, um, I probably shouldn't have said said that about the pantry. It was just a conversation I had with someone. They said their average, you know, average ticket and how many, how many turnovers turnovers they had. You do have expenses because you're, you know, your family is not getting that money. And you you have, I mean, expenses, yeah.
All thirty three businesses got a twenty thousand dollar grant, correct?
Uh, some got more than others. Very between five and twenty.
Yeah, there was, there was too many other businesses in town that didn't get help, that had to suffer through it. And now we're going to forgive somebody who got hundred thousand, seventy five thousand. You know, which probably sustained their business for most of the year. You know, I'd love to get a seventy five thousand dollar check in the mail and 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 not have any expenses in my business and then support my family with that seventy five.
Well, you're not just, I mean, these people have employees too. I mean, um, I'm, you know, I mean, if you, if you look at, uh, just even gymnasiums, I mean, um,
The businesses didn't care about the employees. They let them go.
You're, you're not comparing apples to apples. I mean, uh, your business was never shut down by the federal government. So to compare it to your business.
By nine eleven once, and then I got shut down by the Great Recession another time, so I went through some real suffering there.
I actually have a a couple of questions, Ms. Solano. Um, I know that there were thirty three businesses with loans for, that were, that are outstanding. But I also know, I feel like we've talked about, there's been three businesses that have since shuttered their doors. Three or four maybe.
From the information in sales tax, um, Madam Chair, there were three businesses that we know of that had been informed that they did close.
And is, are there, is that, then is it thirty businesses or thirty three businesses?
There are thirty three outstanding loans, businesses with loans that were anticipating, starting to repay them on May the first. And you have the list, um, to via email, but I have it in front of me here.
And so just to clarify it, sorry, the three businesses then that did shutter, are they on that list? Do they still have to pay back their loan?
Uh, the city attorney will help me, but I believe there were personal guarantees.
Every loan had a personal guarantee.
Can you help me understand what that is? Can you help me understand what that is?
Okay, most businesses are conducted in corporate form. That can be a corporation. It could be a limited liability company. Can be a limited liability partnership. It's mostly corporations and limited liability companies. And a shareholder or a member of an LLC is not personally liable for the debts of the LLC or the corporation. Um, I was instructed that every loan to a corporate entity, either a corporation or a limited liability company, would also have a personal guarantee, so that the individual owner was personally liable, uh, for the debt of the corporate entity.
Thank you for that clarification. That helps a lot.
I I wanted to clarify a couple of things. Uh, the the Pueblo Zoo is basically an entity that is, uh, is it's, it's really the city zoo. We happen to have a management agreement with the Zoological Society. And so we do it through a a management system. So, you know, uh, the zoo and the art center, kind of the same thing. Those are amenities that the city should be offering anyway. Um, the Art Alliance, um, is a, is a consortium of a bunch of, you know, smaller art venues. And then I can't remember what the fourth one was.
The Southern Colorado Theater Company. Was a twenty five thousand dollar loan.
These entities are are nonprofit, uh, and and they could have, they could have shut down, uh, or shuttered down, I guess. Uh, in the, in the face of the art center and the zoo, we would have had to pick pick them up and probably funded them anyway. Uh, so I I think there's a little bit difference on those four. Uh, but getting back to, uh, uh, you know, this reconciliation question, I don't mind waiting until that's that's done. But it's not really going to affect, uh, the people that signed the promissory note. There there's actually, those are, those are thirty, thirty four different documents that are independent of whatever reconciliation we want to do here. And if you can prove that it came out of a different bucket, you know, that's fine, but it's not going to change the fact that we've got thirty, we got thirty three outstanding loans. One paid, as I understand. So it was really thirty four, one paid, we've got thirty three, we've got personal guarantees. And, you know, I I just.
I'm not asking that the reconciliation change anybody's mind. I'm not asking anybody to make up their mind. We just talked about consistency. And if we're going to start approving monies, then we need for the dollars to be consistent. We need to see that there's consistency in the reports. And that's all I'm asking, is that before we approve anything, we should make sure the monies match up. And according to her fourteen hours of homework, she's saying the monies don't match up. She's bringing question to it. She put fourteen hours of study into this. And she has something that she wants to say. We need, if we're, we are in charge of the money. We need to know those exact bottom figures and how things play out. It's our responsibility.
So are you asking that we postpone this discussion until we have answers, financial answers?
All across the board with whatever, any time that we approve money, if there's an inconsistency in the reporting, we just need to verify what that is. And before we make any final decisions, that's all. Just until we get, she gets the answers that she's looking for.
What, what is? Laura's answers to me were perfectly there. I I I didn't see any inconsistencies anywhere. You can make up numbers all over the place.
Well, she didn't. She took them from previous meetings. She took them from previous meetings that she watched videos. That's where she got her paperwork from. So she, she did a lot of research into what she is saying and you know, um, she took the time out to do that. She finds inconsistencies and we should just have, if it's just as easy as that, then just answer the questions and and we're done with it.
Mr. Kogosik.
Counselor McCauley Bachecha did make the motion for a deferment. And so I prepared a resolution which said the following. We are going to stop interest accruing, um, until May first, uh, twenty twenty two. And on May first, twenty twenty two, because the loans were done at different times, the resolution said, you owed the principal amount and you owed one year's interest. So the same rule applied to everybody. Uh, based on that, payments are due May first. If you, you want to grant another deferment, I'm perfectly happy with that. But you're going to have to do it by resolution.
And there, there is time on Monday's agenda to add that resolution for on April the twenty fifth, that that's council's direction today. But otherwise, finance is prepared effective May first to send out bills and start the the monthly collection.
I don't know why we're prolonging it. To me, uh, you know, there are two different issues, uh, and, uh, I'm, I'm against postponing it. I I want to go ahead and, uh, and ask these people to, uh, start paying on their loans.
Yeah, so it's, I would, it sounds like.
Well, it sounds like, uh, it'll be on the agenda and then we just need to vote and see what's, you know, how it, how it comes out. I mean, what else can you do?
And it's also.
Saying we should put a resolution on the agenda to to forego the interest for another year?
No, 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 that's what, um, um, Counselor Maestri was talking about. I was just asking her if that's what she was saying. We're talking about, we're talking about, uh, we're talking about, um, an ordinance that payment is due or that you need to start making payments on your loan. So you can throw that ordinance out there, we vote on it. And I mean, we can sit here and talk all night about our feelings about it, so, um.
It's already done. They're supposed to start paying May first. It's already.
Oh, I got you, I got you, I got you.
The ordinance is in place to start payment on.
Okay, so then I would like an ordinance, uh, to forgive those loans. That would be my, my, my direction.
Is it a resolution or an ordinance, Mr. Kogosik?
Well, we, we, we need direction. Yeah, but it one council member does not give direction. One council member does not give direction. Direction comes from the council as a body. Thank you.
So the motion on the table right now is to rephrase the the resolution to have it forgiven. I think that you're going to get an answer one way or the other.
Just a consensus to direction.
Same here.
I'm more along the line of giving them, uh, giving the businesses a little bit of extra time now that they have this false hope that they could have had them, had these loans forgiven, um, just given them an extra uh, few months to get their ducks in the row to start paying. But, I mean, if the ordinance is already going through, that's fine, but I also think that it could be fair to amend that ordinance to allow folks to have a little extra time to start preparing properly.
With the shaking of the heads, we, we would probably go as far as that.
I would support that.
So a resolution that begins, um, or that extends a deferment until
That our sales tax, uh, receipts are way up in the double digits. So these businesses are making money. Why we would give them, they know they're supposed to start paying, uh, May first. There was no indication anywhere that we were going to, uh, forgive the loans. So why, they wouldn't have a a false impression that they would, uh, they should be in a position now to repay the loans.
Well, I think chatter.
In the mayor's discussion and direction to me, I I was assisting the finance office, I brought to his attention that this date was fast approaching. And the staff in finance wanted direction to move forward, and the mayor's direction was to come to city council in transparency to the new council, saying this is in effect, um, on May first. What's the council's, uh, new direction, if any? And that's what brought it on the agenda for us, for me to share with you.
Um, just to, for some of the new council members, um, we had a four-three vote, um, basically to, um, 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 forgive those loans. So it was my, uh, actually, you voted to forgive, Larry. It was, um, Mark, myself, and you. And so this is a new council, so that's why it's coming up again.
And and I guess if we were going to extend them to the first, we would also have to, um, maybe at that time, add that we consider voting on it again, because that gives the, uh, this council the opportunity to to, um, have the opportunity to see if we're going to forgive it or not. Because if we just extend it to the first, and then we're just at the first, they have to pay it.
I, yeah, I would like to support Councilman Martinez Ortega's, um, idea. I also think it'll give us enough time for the city, um, budget office to get their ducks in the row, because there's, there's no, Ms. Solano, right? There's no finance director right now.
Well, they don't need one. The fight, the, the, they're ready to to send out statements for billing, so there's not any additional work. Whatever date certain council's direction is, they are prepared to move forward.
Let's be, let's be clear about one thing. If if we move up, uh, their beginning date of payment of their notes to January one of twenty twenty three, there's nothing in that resolution that says that we're going to revote again, up or down, as to whether we're going to forgive this. There's no forgiveness language in this resolution that we'll bring forth on, uh, uh, Monday. I I mean, it, is that the way, is that the way you understand it?
I understand it to be that now, yes. So Monday, so, but we're asking, we have a majority here of four that say we would like to extend it to the first of the year, and we would like to see language at that point. Um, added that, um, we take a vote on whether we're going to forgive it or not.
Whether to forgive or not, and then the vote on resolution to extend.
Loan, loan forgiveness is within your power. But it would have to be done by ordinance requiring two readings.
Hmm, okay.
So, so.
I I think we're, we're prolonging the inevitable. And, uh, you have to remember, uh, these people have had these loans, uh, going on two years. And, uh, giving them another six months, um, you know, it it it's, it's just prolonging the inevitable. I mean, at some point, whether it's today or it's January one, they're going to have to start paying the loans back. And and why we want to believe that we're going to revote on the forgiveness case is wrong.
Madam Chair? Thank you. I will prepare the resolution, so I need some direction. Yes, I understand it. The direction is your first payment is not due until January first, twenty twenty three. But you still owe interest, uh, at one percent on the loan principal. Uh, we've already assessed one year's interest, so you owe the principal plus one percent. And you you're going to go, oh, interest, even if we defer payment until January first of next year. That's legally what what has to happen. If you are going to write off interest, then we're, we're going to have to compute that and send a ten ninety nine, uh, to the IRS.
Dan, we waived interest, excuse me, we waived interest, or city council did, through this resolution for one year. Is there not an opportunity to, uh, if city council directs to waive interest so that the loan payment and the interest payment both occur on the same date?
Oh, yes. Oh, for sure. But your interest is going to be accruing. So right now, all thirty three, uh, lenders, sorry, debtors, owe the principal amount plus one year's interest at one percent. So that is what is owed on May first. And then from May first till the end of the year. And then from May 1st till the end of the year, interest will accrue.
Will still continue to accrue.
Thank you.
Again, if, if this number of how many businesses we have in Pueblo is so important, 32, in my mind, 34 businesses out of at least 8,000 businesses, I know we have at least that many, is such a small, small number. You know, it's less than, what is it, 3% of all the businesses in town we're talking about here. And the benefits that they derived in getting these loans, a very little vetting of charging them, especially in this day of high inflation and the, and the interest rate that banks are charging right now. I mean, the benefits that they derived, along with a half a million dollars with the grants, I, I say, you know, we, we start collecting now.
Counselor Warner, did you have something to say?
Um, I did, but I, I forgot. I'll remember.
Okay, Counselor Maestri?
Then, like Counselor Warner has said, the government shut them down. They didn't have any choices. They didn't have the choice to stay open for business. It's not like somebody pulled up in front of their business and said, I don't want to do business here.
Yeah, but they had the choice to ask for a loan. Every other business in town cited, I'm not gonna take a loan.
Everybody was trying to survive.
Burden on myself.
Whether that was taking a loan, a mask, a shot, whatever. Everyone was trying to survive during this pandemic.
Larry, can I ask you a question? You know, when we discussed this before, you were in favor of, of turning those into grants. So what, what changed your mind?
So staff still needs direction for a resolution on Monday. I am still in support of Councilman Martinez Ortega's resolution that's on the table.
I'm not.
Counselor Atencio is not?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I think there are four votes in favor of that resolution. I'll be happy to, to draft a resolution to defer the first payment until January 1st. But interest and principal will continue to accrue.
Counselor Warner?
Um, you know, I, I, I would still like to be able to vote on that and hear public comment. I, I would like, I would like for everyone here to hear from the public and what they think about, what we should do with this. No, I don't think, I don't think you understand what I'm saying. I, I would like to have a chance to vote on this, whether it's a resolution or an ordinance, it doesn't matter. To, I would like a, a resolution or an ordinance to turn these loans into grants. I would like a public discussion on it with the public forum and the public able to talk during, during that, that time before we vote on it.
I would defer to the, to the city attorney, but I believe that the resolution, council has an opportunity for, to listen to the public in, in a resolution as well.
Well, you got two indications. You got two indications for forgiveness. You got two indications for deferring the interest until January 1 of 23. And you have two, you have two individuals that want payment to start. So you don't have four vote, four indications here of anything. Leaving everything to status quo right now would mean that we start collecting the interest on May 1 and call for, call the loans.
Well, there are four votes for deferring the first payment until January 1st, 2023. I will prepare a resolution to that effect. If, if I were a borrower, if I were a business, I wouldn't wait. I, I'd start making payments because interest is accruing on the full principal amount. But that's up to them, so.
So if, if you draft it that way, this eliminates, this makes the final decision that the loans will not be forgiven and the first payment starts January 1 of 23.
Why, why wouldn't you, why would you be adding interest on the, on a deferment?
That was the first year.
I know, but why, why, why can't we keep it the same then?
Because-
Why do you have to throw interest at it?
It's too late.
It's the same thing, it's not too late.
It's principal and interest. Forgiving interest is income according to the IRS. So we, we'd have to do the calculation and send 1099s out.
Could we do deferment of interest through January 2023? As well as deferment of payments?
This last resolution waived interest during the deferment period.
So now it's income, is what you're saying? So you need a 1099 for 2021, right?
Well, the first payment wasn't due for a year.
Right.
Okay, first year was interest-free.
Right.
So now we're into year two and you owe one year interest and the principal amount.
But if, if you, if you got rid of the interest, why, why would you? I mean, why can't it be the same as, as last year?
The IRS would be on the city saying, and the auditors would be on the city saying, you are not collecting interest in violation of the promissory note. So under the note, you owe this amount.
So then you're saying that, that 1% is considered interest to that person? So it's 1099, okay, got it.
What we did here is defer it. It didn't waive interest, we just deferred it this last resolution.
Yeah, we deferred, correct.
So, so the, so explain what we, you just, we've just concluded here.
I am, I am happy to defer the first payment until January 1st. But you still owe the principal, you still owe the interest at 1%.
But to be clear, there's no other chance of, of, of forgiving the loans.
No, as I said a few minutes ago, you can cancel these notes. You can do it. It doesn't violate public policy. When, when people sign these notes, they thought they'd be in business before Christmas. They didn't know, they didn't know that we'd have this massive shutdown and, and all these stay-at-home orders.
Well, I, I want to be clear with-
It's perfectly fine for you to say, we gave grants and-
But they'd still owe the interest, is what Dennis is saying.
No, here's the, here's the situation that we're setting ourselves up for, and I, I don't, I don't like this part of it, is you are now going to have an eight-month period, okay, where these businesses are gonna be holding out the hope now that between now and January 1, this council is gonna forgive their loans. That's the message that we're sending.
I, 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 I can't speak on policy, but I, I hear what you're saying.
Not only that, we're adding eight months of interest to the-
There are a lot of businesses in trouble when these loans were made. People made the decision, should I apply for a grant? Should I pry for a loan?
Most of them applied for both.
Yeah, and they, many businesses said, I am not gonna sign the note. I am not gonna take a loan. Now, I, you have to decide what's best for the city, but I think you're gonna have a lot of businesses saying, geez, if I'd known that it really wasn't a loan, it really was a grant, give me the money now.
Yeah, this, this is, and by the way, you're not going to get anyone to do anything now until January 1. They're gonna hold out hope against, hope, they'll, they'll, so nothing between now and January 1 of 23 is going to happen. They're gonna lobby to have their loans forgiven. Yeah, and ironically, has anybody got any calls from anybody asking?
I've gotten calls saying that they have to pay back. That's the feedback that I get.
I would say-
My feedback is, has been the opposite.
I will say, Councilman Flores, like, I, I do get some business owners who do call me and they aren't necessarily giving feedback of like, oh, you should forgive my loan, but it's more like, you guys do such a great job at supporting nonprofits and there's not been any ARPA proposals that's been, you know, like pushing small business, the small business pillar at all. To my knowledge, Miss Lano, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's really the feedback that I've received.
Yeah, I just think, you know, just-
Have to put that in perspective, too. If we have 8,000 businesses in Pueblo and only 600 got grants, I mean, we left out a lot of people, a lot of businesses. And you've only got 3% of the amount of people that took out loans. The other 97% of our businesses didn't. I mean, where do you put the credibility in this? So all you're doing is kicking the can down the road until January 1.
I'm not sure where to go from this.
It's decided he's gonna do a resolution to defer payment till January 1st. How many times do we have to say that?
Okay. And then per Counselor Warner's idea, having like a public hearing for that resolution? Okay.
And it will be Counselor Atencio in the presiding president's chair on Monday evening for this resolution. Is that correct?
Well, I, I, I work at the pleasure of the mayor and city council. Counselor Warner wants me to prepare an ordinance forgiving the loans. I'm happy to do that, delighted. But it's gonna take, it's gonna take two hearings. Okay, so just the deferment. All right.
It'll be, it'll be open in a couple of-
It will, yeah, I think, I think at the, at the, am I correct? At the council's direction and pleasure, the presiding president, which will be Counselor Atencio for this particular issue, will have the flexibility of opening a public comment in a resolution?
They're supposed to sign up for it, aren't they?
I, I didn't think we-
No, just for public forum, to sign up for it.
Yeah, we have them sign up for resolutions.
For a public hearing, yeah. It's posted at the front.
But not to speak in, not to speak in favor of against a resolution, they don't normally sign up. And it will be at the end of the agenda, our agenda maker says.
They sign up for the public forum, but I believe there's no limit on the resolutions. But they do sign up, yes.
Okay, I think that that solves that staff needs for direction, Miss Solano, is that correct? So it is 8:35 when I conclude this work session.